I used to have a collection of cruiser bikes like. With extra bells.
Evening. Council meeting. We're in discussion. We're discussing with a couple of our advisory boards tonight. And probably before we do much, we ought to introduce our subjects because I think that's. We don't get a chance to. Yeah. Yeah. I mean. Where's Catherine Smith? I mean, she's the one. Thank you very much. So. I guess there's, there's a, one of the things that I want to say, maybe even before we introduce ourselves is. No, let's introduce ourselves.
I'm Mayor of the City Board. I'm Kathy Martin, I'm the superintendent of rec and senior services and one of the staff liaisons for the advisory board.
Dietrich Cavanagh, City Council Board Three.
I'm Judy Current, Representative Senator Two. Barbara Haynes, then we agree.
Superintendent for Board One.
Chris Lane, there. Worked one, two, and three.
Jeff Beatty, Board Two.
Kevin Linsen, Board One.
David Burrell, Head Golf Professional, Co-Creek Golf Course.
Mary O'Brien, Member of the Rec Board, I'm Secretary currently.
Julie Ketcher, Rec Board.
Michelle Van Hout, Rec Board, Vice Chair.
Lisa Northard, Rec Board Chair.
And Anthony Lee, President of the Rec Board.
The Don Tardy, President.
Andrew Cross, New Market, Central, Recreation, everything.
Governor Barto, also.
There are students from mine. Who are here tonight, who asked me for a photo, I mean, you have asked me for a photo. That's very flattering. And why don't we go back?
Sir, he loves health, sustainability manager.
You have a box that is the manager.
Oh, that everyone's in here. Just sit down.
Right now?
Yeah.
On this side. Douglas Spencer with the Recreation Advisory Board, very good.
And welcome. So, there's a few things, we're, we're, we're talking about all of the advisory boards this year. In groups of two. At a time and conversations have been really, really interesting for, for me and I think for enlightening for council. And we've had some really good interchanges. We look forward to doing that tonight. Because we're, we're all about collaboration. We're looking forward to kind of keeping the relationship to. Have and try to get as much alignment as we can between what the. Council is doing and what the advisory boards are doing. As you may know, all of the boards were sort of rechristened or renamed advisory boards. Many of them had different. Versions of that. I think one of them, we had to be careful because it turned out that. The shortened version of it was white supremacist. You know, which we decided we were going to change because it wasn't the right words. It's like referring to DEI issues, it's DIE issue. Not good then. So we've renamed a lot of different rooms advisory. Why have we done? Because they are advisory to us. You're providing advice and counsel to us. You don't, no, you're not needing counsel, fortunately for you, right? You are folks from the community who we are very fortunate to have, working together on things that are. I think extensions of council policy, comments of council policy and so forth. We'll get into that just a little bit. While there may be occasions of boards and board members to be providing, to be, excuse me. While there may be occasions for boards and board members to be effective in providing feedback with staff, that feedback should remain by instruction nature. As boards and commissions do not direct staff, most people probably know that. We have to follow that too. We can't direct staff. Counsel can direct. The city manager, because he's in full, but we can't do that. So if you see a city council person, all in some staff member what to do or what. That should get reported, the city manager, because that should matter. Advisory boards may submit recommendations to budget process, including capital project priorities. This can be done through memo, through your staff liaison. To the city manager and the findings, the findings director. Those are due by March 29th, March 21st, okay? That in London, important date. All recommendations will be considered by state council, even if they are not included in the city manager's recommended budget. Okay, so we have a priority that is really important for us to consider, submit it. And that will come to us independently of what city managers request and will consider. The same kind of way as we're building this new two-year budget. It's really important here for that. That's why I underscore that date. Counsel. Should consider the proposed board and commission work plans in light of the council. Had a chance to look at and talk about the budget, council organizational direction and departmental requests. Boards and commissions are not authorized to set a policy. This is at the sole discretion of council. So for example, it would not be appropriate for or the commission to put together a letter on city letterhead. So that, that would not be something you want with. That would be something talked about later. But that would be the way you draw your city management. Boards and commissions are authorized to provide direction of staff. As I said, all staff under direction of city manager should remain advisory council in nature, council plan wish. To revise the board and commission work plans as necessary, particularly if our work plan changes. This year, we're having its first joint meetings in some time. We may need additional time with some of the boards and conditions and, you know, feel free to talk with us if you feel like you need additional time as well. But we found these conversations to be pretty helpful and useful and we haven't, there've been, I think, a couple that we need to have back because there's big changes that are going to shift the direction of their work plans that we can already anticipate. So with that, Recreation Advisory Board update and 2024 plan, I think we have a presentation from the chair.
Don't move. Oh, okay. Yes, we'll get right into it. I want to say, Mayor, council and staff, thank you for the opportunity to present our board's work tonight. We are so happy. These meetings are back on your calendar, so thank you. We'll get right into it. Our highlights and successes. Oh, Kathy, sorry. Okay, all right. We'll go through just a couple of highlights and successes that for our board. We have the Recreation and Outdoor Recommandments Subcommittee in conjunction with the members of P.E. Plan. And this has been a true collaboration of both boards for the outdoor recomenity. It's a, it's a new subcommittee, so for more information in the future. We have worked closely as a board and the staff to provide a work plan for the city council consideration, which you have in your packet, highlighting our priorities. The completion of the golf course strategic plan in 2021. The completion of the financial feasibility study for the corporate golf course by Z Design Group and GM Consulting in 2022. The identification and advocacy for tennis court improvements with the addition of new wind sunscreen to Centennial Tennis Courts and resurfacing and improvements to Mission Green Tennis Court, which are the highlights of our board. If you guys have any questions, let me know. All right, moving on to our, the reports, our highest priorities. We'll start with the Co-Creek Golf Course. In accordance with the recommendations made by the Z Design Group build, we built a new clubhouse at Co-Creek to better meet the needs of the mountain community, contribute to the future financial viability of the golf course and replace the current highly. Energy inefficiency or the inefficient facility. As well as build a new club, a cart barn. We should have had a clubhouse as the current one, cart barn and clubhouse within disrepair and is inadequate for today's standards. And this is actually the last city building, I think, that has not been updated, other than the White House Main Street. So talking about energy efficiency. Next. We would like to expedite the construction of an outdoor golf facility, which includes supporting the master planning and identification of, identification of a location and funding for new courts. Courts are needed to meet the growing demand in this community. So we're highly energetic about getting those into the law courts. Tennis courts. We would like to renovate and reconstruct the two east courts at the Centennial Course Facility, as well as add a fifth court adjacent to the existing court on the west side of that facility. And I am apologizing because I know the soccer and multi-purpose fields didn't make the slide, but we would like to support master, support master planning to identify land and allocation for. Purpose of soccer and multi-purpose, multi-purpose fields in the city, which are very well needed by possible. And that is our priorities. Just for education assets within some of the new board members, but. All assets current and new, all assets current and newly proposed after our agreement is provide a positive impact to our community. And the identified assets are as follows. We've got a recreation center, which is phenomenal. Co-Creek Golf Course and Clubhouse, Memories Square and Full House. Centennial has four forks and is home to the Centennial Valley Tennis Association, which provides adult leagues for all levels within the city. Mission Green Tennis Court, Pirate Park has two tennis courts, the inline skating rink and skate park. The sports complex has four ball fields, Miners Park has one ball field, Lawrence and Rieto Park has one ball field, one field and a basketball park and a heritage park. The Meadows Park is golf. My rock has two ball fields and Memories Square Park has a bocce ball and marquee bin, all of which are phenomenal assets to the city and are maintained as such for future use. Next, our Recreation and Senior Center. Just another couple of little highlights that we thought would be informational for you. The expansion was completed, 28.6 billion dollar expansion was renovated in 2019. And the Rec Center provides a daily news for the community with last year having 392,350 day visits for 2023, just fabulous. They offer extensive programming in athletics, fitness and wellness, offering over 100, 120 drop-in fitness classes per week with excellent staff. They, this program. Provides programming for many youth sports and activities as noted in the attached catalog. They provided state licensed preschool and summer daycare. And host many special events. A couple of the highlights are the touch a trunk and family pool, night just in a local couple drop-in gear. The Senior Center provides a gathering, kind of this gathering spot for all of our senior community. They have daily drop-in and organized programming. Offer many amenities, day trips, which I hear that the Black Clock Trip is a highlight and is always sold out. The Senior Center offers many special events and programs, classes and seminars and their daily congregant website. So kudos to our Rec and Senior Center. Our golf course within the city, Co-Creek Golf Course is a nationally recognized award-winning golf course. The, it reopened in 2000, the golf course reopened in 2015, our completion of the renovation due to the, the course from the 2013 one. It provides 18 and nine holes of golf and a five hole option, which has been very well received from five. And is home to many leagues, the men's league, the ladies league, the beginners league, couples league, and I'm not sure if David has a junior league, but there are many leagues that support the whole career. A fun highlight, what I'm, I know we're excited about is they've completed 70% of the Audubon certified wildlife sanctuary accreditation, which is, so it's quite an honor, so. And it produces, the golf course produces over 40,000 golf starts and another 5,000 individual rain uses per year. They're busy out there. And David and his staff have the largest junior program in the state of Colorado, which is phenomenal. I kind of, we kind of, this is their critical recommendation. The current clubhouse is currently outdated for the advanced business and at the end of its functionality, per the feasibility study. Completed by the Z Design Consultants. And it's currently the most energy inefficient in the city. City staff has done a phenomenal job offering within the clubhouse design that is currently no longer functional. So it is time to move forward with a more efficient building with adequate spaces for critical golf assets, golf carts range for staff and additional revenue sources that we are simply unable to explore. It's time given up. So as you see in the next four slides, we're trying to kind of let you know, if you haven't been out to the golf course, that. The staff is working in conditions and some of the major repairs that are needed. They can go through each slide. The golf course storage, which is a, quite a feat for the staff out there. They stored 65 carts in a space that's meant for four. And that is a, a huge investment, those parts for the city, that they are working in and out of every day and not trying to damage them. The second. That we're concerned with is the possible dangers to not have adequate space for charging all those electric carts. And right now, they were, they pull, every day that it's operational, they're pulling those carts out and putting them back in safely. And the next, you'll see in the, the cart barn, the ceiling is, has folded due to the leaking pipes that they're trying to navigate through. So. You went out and took a tour of it, it looks worse than a boat. Just another couple, the siding is deteriorating, the open fencing and windows, it's just. It's just with all the water damage is, it's a need of repair. And putting good money after bad at some point, we're just kind of, you know, recommending that you take a look at the feasibility study and see what we can do. The, in the clubhouse, when you're in there enjoying your sandwich or just after golf, if you look up the ceiling, which is a, the. Quote unquote, but I like that, is a crack in the drywall. Separation due to water damage from the roof. The roof has been repaired many times. It's just kind of like a cartoon. It's just going to keep on leaking. And then the do not enter, that was. That is actually the attic and the staff, David and his assistant staff. So there's insulation up there. So if that comes, they move that, all that insulation is going to come down. So they have that happen. And then just to kind of go through what they're working, David and his four assistants are working within that confines of that one office. It's approximately a 12-foot, 12-foot by 12-foot area. And so just to kind of. Now. Next, Memories Square. Currently, Memories Square, we have no recommendations or changes. Memories Square is a great city asset seasonally. The renovation in 2018 and 19, a new bath house and splash pool were constructed. Memories Square has a great community park space with a playground and pavilion, a six-lane 25-meter swimming pool, wading pool and bath house. It is home to competitive swim events, fitness program, and is home of the Dolphins Swim Team. They have recreational drop-in surf times for all citizens. And the facility rental. Revenue is, is great. They have rental from the Dolphins, the Friday birthday rentals into the pack from the time it opens up for rental on Fridays. And it's just a great place to be. So kudos for getting that read back. Lastly, our areas in which we would like the board feedback and your input. Council priorities with respect to outdoor recreation, council priorities or council priorities as with respect to outdoor recreation amenities as identified on our work plan. What does council view the role of the Rec Advisory Board to be? And how will Rab give advice to council on an ongoing basis and how will the board receive feedback based on what we're, we're working on? And then what, lastly, what are the next steps to determine funding for a new one? That is it. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. And this is part where. Can answer some questions, maybe before, when the questions, are there other tools that. Members of the advisory board want to handle it? Yes.
I've been on the board. I don't know, six years. One of the frustrations, and I'm sure you. If you want to move beyond frustrations, frustrations come because. We get new city employees in high levels who. Have not, you know, we, we had a situation where we had been. Promised a certain thing and then a new person comes and there is, this thing disappears. Similarly, there are so many new city council people, new mayors. And it's not a criticism, but it's a frustration for those of us who've served. These two multiple, multiple years. And we keep saying, and as we keep saying. One of the things is maintenance has not been done. And I understand, we had a big fire that was catastrophic by any measure. Nevertheless. To allow city facilities of any kind to keep deteriorating. Can't go on. There has to be. Budgetary consideration. And I don't know legally, I don't know legally that involves. Putting aside money for depreciation for things. But there's a problem with maintaining these wonderful facilities that we have. The golf course is maintained and is supported. The Rec Advisory, the Rec Center and the Senior Center are maintained and supported. But a lot of the amenities in the parks have deteriorated and you've recognized that and are correcting some of it. Some of it is very difficult, given the availability of repair people. We fixed the two east courts. In Centennial Park this year. That lasted about a month before it, just go down and take a look, they're all, the two east courts are cracked, just the way they were before the repair. So there's a frustration level. I do not play golf. And yet I see the golf. Facility clubhouse being, from what I'm told, the smallest and the oldest of all of our competitors. And I do not play golf, but I am thrilled with the Audubon. Being able to certify us even to the degree it is at the moment. It's a beautiful force. I do not play golf, but I think we can. Fund this in such a way that the golf. Facility would also include perhaps a major meeting room that could replace this, perhaps. An event room that could be a source of income. There are creative ways to do things. So I, I put all of that out there because it's been frustrating and I'm sure I know that she heard this from pretty much every board. Thank you.
I can just jump in. As a golf professional, I'm also on the Recreation Advisory Board. And we were reminiscing that the last time we were in this room was 2016, when the Golf Advisory Board was making a presentation to the City Council. The, I, I guess, the one thing I would just add is that after nine seasons in the clubhouse, I can identify every ward on that building. Or in the building. I'd be glad to, you know, talk about it at length because I can give you some stories. But I would say that just a dovetail that many times in the sales capacity, when we are talking to corporate customers, want to come in. And have to, when I show them the outside pavilion, it's this is where your meeting space is. We get a lot of people, just don't come back or just thank you, no thank you. So there are a lot of turn downs, a lot of opportunities that we have missed. Because of just the sheer size. Lisa didn't mention that she's the president of the ladies league, that they can no longer hold their, their year-end banquets there because of the fire codes and the, the number of people that are allowed in the bill the same way with the men's league. They have to go to some other facility just to have a meeting. And if we, if we do try to accommodate a smaller group that fits underneath the fire code. They all, one group has to suffer. So if we have a special group, been there, golfers suffer because they can't get to the counter to get this basic service and vice versa. So there are definitely some limitations. And plenty of opportunities that we've let slide by just because we've been to accommodate them.
Council questions?
Sorry. I like.
I like Lisa, we've been on the board since the beginning and we both were on the Golf Advisory Board prior to that. So really appreciate the opportunity for us to come here and share these ideas we do. We've been talking about them for years. I also really want to acknowledge Deb because even though we don't have council liaisons anymore, it back in the day we used to, she comes to our meetings regularly and we so appreciate just having her sit there and listen and give us feedback. Is this feasible? Is it not? You know, just some general direction. Thank you, Deb. And, you know, we always kind of struggled with our role was, but Chris, you kind of opened with your comments and really clarified that. So I appreciate that. We are advisory. There have been times in the past that we're, we're like, well, we're advising, no one's listening to us. But I do feel the tide is changing and I really appreciate that.
Michelle was on the City Council.
So I, I have that on the other side. But this is my true passion. So I'm happy to let you all be some city council and I'll just be on the record.
Thanks. And I didn't mean to interrupt you. Sorry. Other comments? Thank you very much for taking time to prepare this. And I know in preparing it, we've looked at our materials for the work plan and you know, there's some significant asks in there and that's, that's what we need to understand. One of the, yes.
Well, I have a couple of comments, questions. First is just a comment. Um, I did a talk at a first grade class at Fireside Elementary. And at the end of it, I asked them for their dream list things. And the first top item was they wanted a swimming pool that is for birthday parties only.
We have that on Friday. I know they'd send them.
Right. So they want the whole pool. Well, and also they wanted a candy factory built next to school. Um, then the second thing is I think it would be good if you explained why you want the fifth court at Centennial, the tennis court. Uh, because, you know, repairing the courts that we have is important, but there was a specific reason why you wanted that fifth court added there. So.
What happens when you have league matches is you usually have five groups playing. So you have like two singles groups playing and three doubles or something like that. But it's oftentimes five groups playing. And so the most that they can have in one place are four. And they either have to wait and play later, which when it's in the evening, you run out of sunshine. Or they are divided. So if you've got four people playing or four groups playing at the Centennial Park and one playing at Pirate's Park. And then at the same time, they'll probably have four at Monarch and another one at Pirate's Park. But if we had one place where you could have all of them playing at one time, it's really ideal.
There's, um, a comparative to the golf course. And the comparative is all the other communities in our league have five courts. We're the only ones that do not. And it's almost embarrassing. So those are some of the reasons.
Then my next question or comment is, are there any courts of any kind, bocce, tennis, pickleball, whatever, planned for reconstruction at Non-Play Park or some bowl?
There's not.
All right. And then my, the one I would wonder about those cottles in the master plan for that, there could be opportunities I thought. But I don't think there's a plan. All right. And then my last question would also be for Kathy, I guess. Well, wondering about why the grab and go lunch was dropped from the senior center because that seemed to be a really popular program that served a lot of local seniors.
Yeah, I agree. It was, uh, grabbing was something that we implemented in response to COVID. And so we, um, obviously couldn't meet in person. And so we started doing grab and go curbside pickup for the seniors. And then when we were able to come back in the building, we continued with, um, repackaging meals that, um, seniors could pick up and take home or, um, take offsite to eat. And we did that, um, up until January of this year and, um, a couple of reasons that, um, we had to drop it. One, of course, was funding. Um, we, um, got significantly less funding to get a grant, um, through Boulder County. Um, and their funds had been reduced, um, just with a lot of, or the ending of some COVID funding coming through. Um, and then, um, one of the number one reasons for having a fun get meal site is for personal socialization. And although, um, we also loved the grab and go and, um, felt like it did serve a great purpose. Um, with the funding and then just not meeting the mission of the, of socialization.
Others?
Thank you. Um, first of all, wonderful presentation. So nice to see you all tonight. That's what it does. Resting because one of the media cards, if you're in, you're now. No, okay. He says, no, folks. So this is really nice to all get together. And I want to, first of all, before I make my closing questions, acknowledge the frustrations that were voiced as far as your responsibility, some opportunities for recruitment as it relates to communications back and forth. Uh, and some consistency in strategy even as leaders change over time. I think that makes a really great start to that. Um, and I'm looking forward to continuing to do one of those things. Uh, my question before I go to my other is, you know, tell me how the potential future for privately owned pickleball courts plays into the whole public.
Yeah, I can address that because I'm also part of the pickleball community. Uh, one with all the other hats. Uh, so we're all super excited about the new facility that's slated to come, but it's private and it'll have a membership be attached to it. So it makes it less accessible for many. What we're really thinking, what I envision is an outdoor facility that serves our community. And Superior has a created scene called of one. They have six quarters, always busy. Everybody can just drop in. You don't need a reservation. You just walk in and you find a place to play pickleball. And that I think is really what the average pickleball player is for Louisville. I think the club model is going to just serve a whole different population, quite frankly. You know, if you ever go to open play at the Rec Center during the pickleball hours, it's probably, probably one of the most busy times in the gym, which do not say, it's, it's crazy with all people, lots of different levels and abilities. And then they could just take that outside on the other side.
Yeah, I actually just did on that exact same venue. In order to play, is it indoor pickleball thing you guys are doing at the Rec Center? Yeah. So which means you have to pay for a Rec Center membership.
Or drop in.
Right. So it's not like it's community funded. So it would be very similar to the private facilities. Because they have to.
Yeah, it's just like if you went to the Rec Center to swim, right? You either have a membership, like I walk in three times a day. Or you pay your drop in or you pay for a punch pass or whatever.
So or has the community have been okay with paying for those to, to play the football? You said it was really popular.
Well, you know what? A lot of the, honestly, a lot of the drop in at the Rec are seniors. And they all have very discounted silver sneakers. I know personally a lot of people, they walk in, they're, they don't pay anything because whatever the silver sneaker's equivalent is now.
And, and remember that, that the advisor board advises. We've got staff here too can speak to some of these, um, issues perhaps also.
That's okay.
Another question.
Well, I think kind of where you're going is there, the fee, the drop in fee to play at the Rec Center is very low, especially for the senior population, um, for a facility that is coming in. You can expect a, for like a one hour, um, pickleball court time, um, in comparable places like the facility in sure that's very similar. Um, at peak times, you'll be getting twenty five to thirty bucks and not really so, so.
Yeah, it's usually ten dollars a person. So you have four people, forty dollars an hour. That's if you can get a court.
That's all very helpful. I think that into your question. So my last comment is related to some couple of opportunities I identified that I'm curious if you've thought about yet. If not, we consider them, you know, when you're going through the different facilities and the, the recommendations. Um, you know, we talked quite a bit about the clubhouse and how it's inefficient from an energy standpoint. I'm sure some of this falls on the sustainability, you know, groups play instead, but you know, even if memories were cool, brings in good money, you know, it's a great location. Like, are there any opportunities there for improvements as far as energy efficiency goes? And again, that might be the other board's role, but I just want to throw that out there now. And the other thing I would love to see is the, like, is about D E I as it relates to recreation. D E I, um, diversity, equity, inclusion. I think as we strategize and plan ahead, your group is a group, like this advisory board and working with staff, I think is a great opportunity to figure out a way to be all of the things in recreational use though. Um, so that is something that I, I literally would like to.
So one of the things we get visits is I'm sure the board too. By people who want to encourage us to build Yankee Stadium. We could probably, first of all, backtrack. We do not own any fields for soccer. We rent them from Boulder Valley. And they could decide one day that they're not going to rent it to a senior. And one of the things we get, we've had people from baseball, from soccer, from lacrosse come to our meetings and say, we can do a that, what would you call it? A gathering of, you know, tournaments, I guess. And it would be a very big fundraiser. So there's another area where we're looking at exactly that kind of thing. But we were asked for this meeting to prioritize. And we would love soccer fields. One of the things about the pickleball is that as a senior who does occasionally play, um, I don't really like playing indoors. But I also, as a person living in this community, don't want to discourage the new business by building a competitor city facility. That's more or less why we were talking about maybe four to six courts that are available outdoors as a drop in for free. Because that would encourage seniors here who are poor to play and it would not discourage business.
One more thing just to add, um, Jane's comment, but with regards to the sports complex, and I don't know why I mentioned this to Adam, but long ago, um, the, the east side of that complex, which is owned by Lafayette. The original plan was Louisville would put in the ball and Lafayette would put in the soccer fields. So that land is there. And I know that Lafayette had tabled it on the, the background, but I didn't know if there was a conversation that Adam or Jeff or anybody could have in resurrecting those plans that were once viable and it just didn't happen on a Lafayette side. So I just want to let you know that.
I don't know exactly where that stands. I, that is what I understand. That continent's been there. My, my understanding, and maybe this is that the finger pointing that's gone, is that it's, it's always been a lack of, um, resolve by Lafayette, you know, when they get their own reverence. And it's odd that it's so close to Louisville, right? In that respect, I don't know whether staff can, I mean, can speak to that.
Yeah, I think it's, as you've said, it's, so that's jointly owned property, uh, City of Lafayette, Boulder County, City of Louisville. Um, when, when we originally, uh, developed, uh, I'm just looking at history. It says that, um, Lafayette had, um, maybe a tension of, um, building soccer fields in that space. Um, they would have to identify a funding source for that, whether that in or through a law or whatever they want to do. Um, and I think over the years, their priorities have shifted. Um, and I, yeah, I just don't think it's a priority.
And I don't know if that's going to change with, you know, the Highway forty two plan. I mean, there may be some, um, and, you know, we've talked about perhaps doing some inter inter city gatherings and kind of interests that we get. Maybe some of that we might want to put on a list of things to talk with Lafayette about or have our have a staff talk with that a little bit about, if there's been a change. And I mean, it used to be that, I think, back, back in the day, uh, Lafayette had a lot smaller tax base than it does now. And a lot of it is a smaller community. They're doing a little bit better these days. Uh, at least I'll find that out over the next few days when I spend time there, Mayor Proton, the City Council person Washington. But I think it's, you know, I don't know whether that is something that's going to be there forever. That is whether it's.
I just thought, just to kind of, that conversation were to be had that was in the plans.
I know one person in the council is very big advocate for soccer fields, huge. So.
Yeah, I don't think Lafayette has this. I mean, they're, they're strapped for fields as well in the city. I believe so. Yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know that was a conversation that could be resurrected and.
Something about soccer. No, I mean, I think the, the big loss for Louisville. So I've been a soccer coach for twenty four years. I know, I don't look that way. Um, anyways, uh, I, I witnessed Treble, the local soccer club, fall in on itself and get gobbled up by, um, FC Boulder, of which I was a coach. So it wasn't like, but we lost in our community, the soccer club for kids that live and play here in Louisville to have a local club because there weren't facilities. And a club like Treble isn't big enough, wasn't big enough to have the investment. They need to rent a field. They can't buy the land, build a field and knock out a field. It's just, that kind of money is, is, is ridiculous. So even FC Boulder, Boulder County United, they just rent Boulder fields. There are lots of Boulder fields to rent, right? And there's nothing here. So Louisville literally does not have a field for which a club could rent. And so what that means is an actual recreation that most kids, let's say a majority of kids experience through some point in their life, they play that sport. Uh, we can't, we really can't have a local soccer club because we don't have a, we don't have that facility. So that's my frustration. Um, my, all three of my daughters play soccer and all three of them practice in Boulder or Erie or elsewhere because those are the only places that have that facility. And so I, I, I find it just like, as Mary was pointing out, just, uh, for me, just kind of a personal embarrassment of our community that we do not have one single like quality, um, what is multi, multi-sport recreational field for lots of different things that could, that could be there. And they're, they're moneymakers once they exist, right? I mean, the rental, it would be rented all day, every day to someone. That would be no problem. So it, the lack. So it, the lack of existence is, is frustrating, but yeah, when you look at a map, it's not, fields are big, right? And I think the, the, the best shape of a, of a soccer complex is like two hundred and fifty yards by two hundred and fifty yards that fits six full fields, and you can move them so they don't wear out. And so like, that's the, that's the spot, you know, for two hundred and fifty yards by two hundred and fifty yards. And that's super adjustable and small fields, big fields, all that one of the stuff. And if you look at that square on a map in Louisville, there's not a ton of places you can put a square like that. So you gotta get kind of creative, but that space east of our footballs certainly can fit that kind of space. But yeah, it's expensive, I mean, wow, is that expensive to build a soccer field, right? Those are, those are millions of dollars, um, a big investment. So, I mean, I don't have much more to add except that, like, as a, as a record advisory board. And then, you know, outdoor recreation, it does seem like a huge missing piece to us. And, and my, my, you know, we have, I, I look at your list, but again, ten baseball fields in Louisville? Something like that, ten, ten baseball fields? I mean, I know we have.
Yeah, but yeah.
Six, anyways, I can come up with seven instantly.
Right.
So something like seven to ten baseball fields, um, and zero soccer fields. And so then, again.
Yeah, those ten.
Yeah, oh, yeah. So that's, that's, you know, something I think to consider. It's the same thing, the argument that people have on tennis courts versus pickleball courts. Like, well, geez, if you want a pickleball court, like, you could use our tennis court. I know, oh, I know, careful, coming out of my mouth and getting slapped in the back at the same time. Just saying, like, that's a surface, right, that you can say, oh, well, we can, we could give up a tennis court or a pickleball court or a couple football courts. Same thing, like, you give up a baseball field or a soccer field, they're, they're about the same size. But which, which baseball field did you want to take away for someone, right? So it's a lot easier to add, right? It's a lot easier from a, from a community perspective, a lot more palatable, to just add a new facility to the community. But where you do that, how you do that, where the funds come to do that, all of that. Um, but again, I mean, with the ability to rent it, something that instantly creates revenue is a nice thing to look at trying to build, but certainly as a council member, um, I would be really interested in the recommendations that you guys, if you looked at our community and looked at the different possibilities and locations and, and what that kind of, you know, cost and revenue would be. And put something forward, like, we'd really like clubhouse, and this is what it's going to cost, this is the revenues that come in. That's fantastic. Also, like, a multi-use field and where it could be and what those funds would be. Yes.
So with respect to the clubhouse, we actually did do that.
Right.
These buildings stayed. But I want to throw out this idea that it's kind of been churning around in my head for quite a while because we're talking about clubhouse, soccer fields, multi-pickle skill, pickleball courts, other needs, what? Not, but truly, these are wants for any community, let's be real. But I go back prior to the rec center renovation, and Lisa and I again went on the task force that addressed indoor recreation needs and amenities. So that was like at least a year-long process with representatives from different constituents. Jeff was on that committee as well. And we came up with a plan and we, you know, took it to the citizens, we met the focus groups and the open houses and the whole process and came up with a really good plan that then we took to the owners with the bond initiatives. And I'm wondering if we've been thinking about doing something similar. I'll back up before I do that. Even at that time, I remember there was a lot of desires for outdoor recreation. And we kind of put those people off and said, that's a whole nother project. We can't make this one too big. So we cut the outdoor and drew the line. And now we are, five years later, with all the outdoor needs. Can we start that process to just what we're talking about tonight? Yes, that's my question.
That's a, a really good point. I remember, I remember the meeting at which a bunch of the youth advisory board uh, kids said, we want a renovated rec center. And that was like the first, it snowballed that. They had a very specific idea. And some of the things came to pass, a lot of them didn't, but that's okay. They wanted a water park. Of course, it's sort of like old candy factory next to the school, right? But, um, but I, I would say that one of the things, I mean, there are so many things that are going on this year. We've got another school plan process, which is a, a big piece of it. But there's also, um, a city survey that's going to go on. And, um, I know that there will be competition for the real estate and the city survey. Um, but we've, we have at times polled people and asked them about certain kinds of amenities and whether they're interested in that. And, and that may be, I'm not going to promise it, it depends on, like I said, that's it, we're, we're taking a lot of public input on a whole bunch of things. What was the word? There's an expression for, um, surveying people too, isn't it, survey?
But do you.
Survey, that, that we've got to kind of think about. But that's an interesting idea because part of it for us is, you know, we have only so much. We've got revenue coming in, right? And these are, many of the things you're talking about are capital projects. And it's sort of like, well, do you want, you know, Louisville, you want this stuff? I mean, our, our residents have, I think it's fair to say, very ambitious uh, plans for the city in terms of what they would really like. Um, and some of these things are needs. I, I'm not willing to say, frankly, that soccer fields are one. I, the so many kids play soccer that I think it's just, I personally think it's a tragedy that we don't have that. I mean, my kids were on Treble, and I remember what the, you know, right around the time that it failed. And it just was kind of embarrassing for a community our size. Um, so that, you know, they're, you know, I'm betraying my own bias, right? I'm only one person in council, in the community, but I know there, well, Caleb, I guess, too, but, and others as well. But I, I think those are the kind of things that we need to hear. And I would, I guess I would encourage you to work with, um, you know, work with liaison and bring those things forward if you think they're important. Because sooner or later, what we have to do on those things is say, all right, Louisville, do you like these things? You really want these things? Are you willing to pay for them?
Exactly, and let's figure out exactly what you want.
Yeah, and that's what happened with, uh, you know, the rec center. And that was a long process.
It was a great process.
It was, part, part of it was bringing the community along. Part of it was trying to get from the community what was sustainable. And a warm water pool didn't make the cut.
Nor a diving pool.
Nor a diving pool, yeah.
Uh, and I remember those, there were very, very difficult discussions around that.
Out of that, we just add to that, the community outreach. I remember having the tent at the, at the street fair, the farmer's market, and then at the Labor Day, um, memory square park, and just asking questions, getting feedback. That will be total something.
Yeah, well, th- these things are things that you might think about. I, I don't get too much of the weeds.
No, it's okay.
But I think, um, you know, the town runs on volunteer by citizens. And I guess, I, I don't know, other people have comments for it, offer.
Uh, I've just, one quick comment is that my, I have a granddaughter full straight. And she plays soccer, but she plays it through B V S D at L M S and, uh, or L E S uh, in their field behind school. So it's available on a limited basis, it makes.
Small.
Right, yeah, that's what I was saying.
They exclude enough regulations.
Right.
Fields that would be a little too expensive.
Um, I just wanted to say before we, with the, um, I know we're an advisory committee, but we're also an appreciative community, and we really tell our staff people all the time how much we appreciate them here and Kathy and, and all the people that come and do presentations and fabulous, fabulous staff.
That's, that's really nice, dear, and I appreciate that you're saying that.
And thank you all for surfing on the board.
Um, one thing that I wanted to say, though, is kind of following up to what Jean said and everything else, is that the golf course facilities are at a state, a situation where they either need a tremendous amount of maintenance or they need to be redone. And the problem with the tremendous amount of maintenance is that then you are, you know, putting new one in old blocks or something like that. And so, um, the, all those purchases and investments that we've made and all the arts and everything are being ruined because they're not being properly protected. And so as far as like money, and I understand that money is, you know, always in short supply, um, that to me makes no sense. If we have brand new golf carts and then we're getting them ruined, that's a problem and having things leak down them and anything else. And then to the question about, you know, what about memory square and everything else? The issue is, if you can only pick one thing, then our advocacy has, I can give all the meetings I've ever been to, said, if we can only pick one thing, the one thing we really need is to fix the golf, uh, clubhouse. And even memory square has had quite a few additions and repairs and things like that. And it's in a state where it's not leaking and it's not a problem, and it's relatively energy efficient. Whereas the clubhouse is, if you're looking to be sustainable, and you're looking to actually reduce carbon footprint and all of those questions, doing small incremental changes to lots of places versus fixing the one thing that is absolutely leaking, which is giant amount of carbon dioxide problems going on, which either has to be maintained by a small amount or large amount, or rebuilt by a big, large amount. Then I think our advocacy has always been, let's look at the one thing that absolutely is our priority.
Very good, very good. Um, yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you brought up the golf course. Do you think from hearing, like, talking to residents who utilize the golf course, is it in disrepair and energy inefficient? And/or is it not meeting the needs of the golfing community?
All, all, I'd say all of it, yeah. Yeah, I would say every, every part of it.
Yeah, and I, I've always felt like it was kind of a cool concept to be able to, like, expand it, have it be like this really fun place, like having a maze. It could have great views, uh, both ways. Look at the golf course and look what God gave us in those mountains, right? It's, it's incredible. We could take advantage of it. The question is, is there a way to do it and have it paid for itself? Because it is un, really expensive to build in the college.
If you go back to that feasibility study, we did look at that because you think, oh, we could have weddings, we could party, we could have all these things. And yes, we can have all those things, but not to the extent where we could get rid of those.
Um, let's, you have questions? Because I wanted to double check. Uh, I'm more commenting on golf, like, wait, what? Want to be good, if you got questions, no, never. Yeah, because we're, I'm especially, we pick up all some of these outdoors, you're envisioning an outdoor facility.
Yes.
Because of the relation and everything.
Yeah.
And I, what else?
And, and you can't use, as Deb mentioned, the soccer fields that are already within the city that are B V, I guess they're owned by B V S D.
Yeah, we don't have soccer fields.
Because they blew some of those ones, gorgeous new turf field, it's, um, not a, like, you, so, anyways, that's, that's B V S D property.
For, for all, for our program that we put on, our soccer program, we rent fields from B V S D to rent those on. So L E S, that's like our home base for games and practices. That we use.
Rent L M S because I didn't, I never see any brand L M S field on weekends.
Um, we, we, we try, um, but we, our requests are usually denied. They tell us there's other ventures out there. So I don't, I don't know who uses it, but Cold Creek also has a field that we use, and then we use some fertile land. Um, that's not fields, you know, that's not officially soccer fields.
I, I never, like I said, I never see anybody, I don't see organized games at L M S ever, ever. And I live right there, so I think we should press on that a little bit. If we're renting, I prefer to rent L M S over those, well, the L E S fields, but that's a conversation about that. Any other?
I'm just, and I comment back, so the National Golf Foundation and the Z Study Group and their feasibility study, they, uh, projected that our revenues could hit uh, two point six million in twenty twenty six. We hit three million last year. So I think we should look at their feasibility study again. And, and I, I wouldn't say, no, we can't pay for it. Uh, I think there's some opportunities that we could pay for, for the clubhouse.
Sound like an end for us.
One, one other question, sorry.
Yeah.
So, again, you know, you hear about all these P G A grants, you know, bringing the youth up, like, if we're like one of these nationally credited golf courses, I just wonder, David, if that's an opportunity to pursue. So, you know, some sort of grant, I mean, that, the P G A makes a ton of money. And now that they're combined with Liv, they make even more money. I just, just wondered if that's, you know, do they fund local kind of public courses to grassroots, through grassroots efforts?
So, yes, but, but the P G A Tour and the P G A of America are two separate organizations. P G A of America, the one who produces all the grants.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not.
Making some money today.
Yeah, so the, there are some, um, there's, uh, it's limited.
I mean, yeah.
It's limited, but there are some.
Um, why don't you take public? Um, now, just a couple of rules on public comment. Three minutes, um, a person, if you, if there's somebody here, you the whole time with one or more people, um, you can speed it up to six minutes. You don't have to speak the whole time, you don't even have to speak the whole three minutes. Um, but, uh, want to take some public comment? I don't know if there's anybody in the room, but does anybody have thoughts about what's been presented so far? But online?
Go into local, we have, like, be related to whatever, or. Kayla, um, yes.
We still have a question.
No hands have been raised, no.
Why don't, why don't we go back then, uh, to, to more, we started a little bit of captive discussion then. Um, and others can chime in here. I, I want to say, first of all, one of the things that I most appreciate um, is something we are and have been encouraging. I think it's probably like a breathing for you all. Um, but you are doing such a good job of reaching out to other boards um, that have some common interests. I, I read in your report, the Recreation Advisory Board met as a whole, discussed calls. Individual board members gave input, an outdoor recreation amenities subcommittee was formed in conjunction with Parks and Public Landscapes Board, and input was solicited from Youth Advisory. I mean, that, that's, we, we really, we want that because there are overlapping, um, you know, interests. And I, I'm sure those discussions were, were productive and helpful, and I can see the fruit of that in some of the things that you've, you've said there. So please keep that up. That's also, you know, uh, one way to generate some interest for the priorities that you're wanting. Uh, because some of these things, you know, and, and we're going to be leaning a little bit with, uh, uh, sustainability, and, you know, frankly, I know that that, that that building is a mess and really an energy disaster. Um, and, uh, there's a lot of things about it that multiple committees may have. Just a piece of it and be able to provide some good suggestions and so forth. So just a, just a thought. Um, I, I want to echo what Councilmember Hound said in understanding or appreciating your frustrations. Because in, in many ways, I think you are somewhat representative of larger communities. Some of you have specific interests, like, you know, under the golfers and a number of you, you know, use different parts of our, of our infrastructure. And, you know, we're, we're landlocked and we're almost built out. And these things create some challenges that, for example, Superior doesn't have quite that issue now. But we're going to, Bloomberg planted, and there's going to be opportunities. And I don't want to discourage you from thinking, um, that way. Um, and yeah, you know. Um and yeah, you know, I, we get a familiar so often. Um and, and we do have council members who are sponges. This is a group of problem solvers that you see in front. And, and we're, we're opportunists, problem solvers, I keep saying. But I, I don't know that it's just that. I think we're looking for opportunities too. And it's, there's a big difference between solving a problem, looking and kind of taking advantage of opportunity. And some of these things really need to be reframed in that, that way. Because a building is, you know, a deteriorating building is a problem. But David was talking about believing, you know, a larger vision would be an opportunity. Um anyway, one, one of the things that I would say, because uh now this is getting ahead a little. But I'll say it anyway. I think it's important to narrow your priorities. Um Angie touched on this and I appreciate that. It's so hard because there's so many things that you all, there's so many things that the city does need. Um and, you know, and that's, and um, you know, we can only do so much. And we're all trying to do the best things that we can and think out longer. That's what we're gonna be thinking a lot of this year in town. So please um help us by, by making some recommendations, capital projects. Uh but, but have some discussions before you do that and try as you can. If, if you can't fix on one, um and you probably can, then, then pick a few of them. And try to rank it. And we will look at it. And they may not be the same as the staff thinking. But we're, we're gonna consider both. We have professional staff that are wonderful at seeing a lot of big picture stuff that maybe all of us. Yeah, and that's the way it ought to be in the form that we have, right? But I, I think we can do great things and I encourage you to narrow them.
Quick question, so we have four priorities, we wanna narrow it to four, just three is one. So we got that, right? We wanna to range our priorities, so we can do that. I just wanted to kind of get your, in your direction as to what are top four.
Thanks, go ahead.
So I, I just was.
Let's go, let's go back, there is, those are the, the golf course.
Yeah, the, the clubhouse, the pickleball, the tennis courts, those are called the perfect fields. So there are about four, two camps. She would ask for some data, right?
Well.
Exactly, just, just a mirror. So I mean, do we want, we can, we can work on those four, but if you need, do you think we should narrow those?
Well, I, I'm, I'm not gonna.
Yeah.
I think it's, I mean, it's clearly the golf. Golf course is probably number one by a stretch, right? That's an expensive launch. Renovating tennis courts probably, you know, less, obviously, everything's gonna be less expensive, right? It's sort of, that's the biggest, that's the price, right? The final, you know, one dollar to get it all out. I just, the pickleball, for what I've witnessed, and I'm a new pickleball player, adding tennis players going on, but now I'm moved to pickleball. I mean, I go to Lake Wanaka, Lafayette, and those courts are beautiful.
Very nice.
So, I think, you know, that's where I go. Right, I would say, so from what I've heard from residents, if pickleball courts are, you know, that's all people talk about. Pickleball, 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 you see it on TV, on stove. Again, I can't imagine, I mean, I think you could put four pickleball courts on one tennis court. I think that's roughly the dimensions. I'm not saying you repurpose one, but yeah, that's, there's, I mean, I think. Whatever, it's whatever, it's more than, more than one. I don't know how much they cost, right? But, you know, I think if you get three pickleball courts for one tennis court, anyways. Again, I don't know, I don't mean to influence your priorities, but. From what I'm hearing from residents, it's pickleball, pickleball, we don't have a rental bill.
Well, we do, we do to influence their priorities.
Well, I, I'm just thinking, I mean, I'm representing, I'm talking about residents, my wife being one of them. She would love, love.
So what I, I do definitely appreciate and I agree about the pickleball. Where we struggle as a board, I think, is because if you put dollar amounts on each of those things, they're so disparate, right? Like, pickleball courts might be more achievable just because it's not so expensive. The clubhouse is a dire need, we all recognize, but the price tag is so big, it might prohibit it. So that's kind of where we are kind of struggling as a board, not knowing where, you know.
And this is where, I think you can, you can work with the staff leaders, right? Because they're gonna be able to tell you some of that um and can provide that. And, you know, they know what's going on elsewhere in the city. That's, that's part of the reason for this. Um we, I don't think it was really articulated very well why we pulled back on liaisons when we did. And then there was COVID and, you know, then there was fire and, you know. But the, the idea really is to, to, that, that liaisons from the council aren't as useful to be the one. Frankly, as the liaisons from the staff, because they know what's going on elsewhere. And they will take back to both the, the staff, uh the rest of the staff, as well as to us, what you're interested in doing. And that's really important. And if they don't, as our city manager said one time, that's a problem. That's not your problem, it's our.
When, when we did have a city council liaison, that was highly beneficial though. Um just for the direction if our board was going the right way, if we're totally off base, they would, you know. But yeah, we, we totally understand.
And, and we, this is not the way it will forever be necessarily. It is the direction that we've chosen to go for.
Sure.
Yeah, so I think one thing that's kind of coming up for me with the golf course, it's something for you guys to think about, like, what I hear a lot is really, it's more about the building and the infrastructure of it and other things that can be done with it, right? Um I'm an avid golfer in the sense that I like to golf, I don't get to golf out, um and I'm not good. But um when I go golfing, right, I, I walk up the steps, I go in, I pay my money, I walk right back up the steps. And then I golf on this wonderful, beautiful golf course. The clubhouse means very little to me as a golfer. Um I don't spend time in any golf, any clubhouse in any uh course I ever go to. I, I basically go straight to the, to the golf. Um and so when I think of recreational advisory board, like, is the recreational benefit of a clubhouse that significant when the golf course is what is recreational? And the clubhouse is an amenity that is, I think, really important, and it's falling apart. And it isn't like all the things I heard, but I kind of think of the clubhouse as being more in the world of like just our assets and our buildings. If you can't let the police station deteriorate, you can't let the library deteriorate, you can't let any of, you can't let City Hall deteriorate, right? So whether or not it's profitable or the golf course can pay for it or it's good for recreation, it is a building, you know, an asset that, or both, that needs to be maintained. Now, does it need to be demolished and redone and a whole new thing? And that's, that's a separate conversation. But certainly, um the, the decarbonization plan for our community, upgrading that building, improving it, all those things seem like something, again, partnerships that, that should be something that multiple boards are calling for it, that this is a building that needs work. Now, while we're doing the building, it's obviously for the golf course somewhat, but also might be a convention space or a meeting space or a, you know, a, other things, right? So it doesn't have to just be for the golf course. But I think there's that, speaking to like, it's, it's more than recreational, that building. Um or even more, it's not even recreational, that building, right? Like, um that, that's my problem with it is, I think when we talk about the kids wanting like, hey, we need to, you know, redo our rec center, like, so that we can go to the rec center and experience the rec center. And so like, oh, I can't wait for all of us to get to the, go to the golf clubhouse is a little bit of a different feel than the rec center, right? A real recreational thing. So like, if you can build a soccer field, I have hundreds of kids on the soccer field playing soccer. You upgrade the clubhouse, I have rich white people like me going and hanging out at the clubhouse, no offense.
No, I agree with that, but you also have the juniors, you also have a lot of other.
So I think that's the part to speak to, is like what, what it brings to our community in that recreational piece. And then also tying with the other stuff of sustainability and just basic building maintenance. Because I think it's important, and to do nothing is not an option. It doesn't work, or you can't do nothing, but it's millions of dollars. And what is the benefit of that millions of dollars? And really, getting on the same page there, because right now, like, I don't have the heartstrings for like a new clubhouse. That's not what, like, it's not pulling my heartstrings, I should say. Um and so trying to figure out like, God, yeah, well, how do I, how do I get motivated to do that? How do we as a community get motivated to do that? What is the, the real purpose and goal behind this renovation? And, and who's to benefit from it? And those are kind of the, the questions to keep asking.
But so, um all of that being true, um the question is, do you wanna take this from us and say you're gonna do something with the building? Because that makes our life much, much easier. I mean, I honestly, you know, it's our number one priority for being a non-golfer. But, you know, you're right. I mean, if I'm wasting my breath and like just advocating for something that's doable. But I wanna go back to my frustration level, because when we first had the liaisons, we did a survey of the community to find out what specific things people wanted. And what they wanted were tennis courts far more than pickleball. Now, that may change, but this is where I don't wanna do it all over again. Yes, I, you're raising good points. Let's, I wanna make sure we kind of bring this to, to a close. And councils, we've got the last piece of it, which is whether we, we want to approve the work plan or not. Um I have a different, I'm not a golfer. I always thought that golf courses were better to run. That, which, you know, I know it's illegal. David probably is gonna come after me with a fire. But um, but I also know that there's a lot of people in Louisville and in the surrounding areas that do play golf. And I know that the, you know, the restaurant out there was a huge amenity to people who had no interest in golf. Uh it was one of the best breakfast places. I loved it. And in fact, I told them, gosh, they should raise their prices because they are so inexpensive, at least at one. I actually didn't tell anybody that, I just thought it, um but.
The white laws are.
Yeah, but, but I mean, it's, this is, there's, there's possibilities for community, there's a lot of it. I, I, so I would say, at least from my part, um I certainly don't discourage that as being part of the, the priorities on their work plan at all. Uh I, I think that's something that will be, again, kind of narrow the scope. I would say for all of what we do and all capital projects, the story is the thing. And the story is the need and the, the opportunity that we have and how we want to help you, the audience that we're, um, that we're maybe catering to and the scope of that opportunity. And I, I really want to call out David for that junior program. I, I, I didn't know that we're the largest, and I, I just think that's fabulous. And hats off to you for that. And the other thing that you didn't mention is the rec center was found by Yellow Sea Magazine to be the best, the best gym in the whole county.
Yeah.
Public or private. I thought that is like the coolest thing. So Kathy. Nice work.
Good job.
And the citizens of Louisville, the taxes, uh great work, because that's a, that's a really big compliment, right? Um others, what about the?
Well, I, I just, I'm on the golf, but I, I sort of agree with you. I respectfully disagree. I know it's not, you know, recreation, not to build a golf course and do treadmills and stuff. But I think, you know, we talk about amenities for our residents, and that has the opportunity to be, assuming we knock it down, because I'm a big leaver and, you know, putting wine in all bottles, but, and doing the safety. But a meat place, a restaurant, a bar, I mean, golfers love, I mean, I'm not a huge golfer, but I love hanging out in golf clubs. You know, like my parents were members in Florida and we love having a drink or having lunch and, you know, watching the golfers. So I think there's a lot of potential there. I know it's very expensive. It's a huge price tag, just like the rec center was.
Right.
But boy, there is an opportunity there for more than just golf. And if we're losing corporate events, you talk about revenue generation, that's a big one. Maybe it's not weddings, but if we're losing all those, you know, closes to the T, all those things that I see over when I'm in room field over at the problems.
Right.
You know, there's, there's a missed opportunity to David's point there. So that two point six, or what if you say three, could be easily four with corporate, you know, outings. But also having a place, I envision my big uncle bar for people, you know, to go to and have a drink even if they're not golfing. So, um yes, it's expensive, but I would, you know, I'll keep it, keep it.
What about the other parts of? Maybe we can.
So I just wanna.
If there's a, if there are other parts of work, I'm not, I'm not going to, I mean, I think the work plan is fine. I, I, it's, it's a lot. That's one of the reasons why I'm suggesting narrowing maybe within each of those categories. You may find yourself, um, you know, being able to settle on the priorities, even as you describe them in the capital request. But others, yes.
I, I personally, I think it's a great work plan. I mean, I appreciate the need to prioritize, but I think the right expression for us telling you that would be the top or the kettlebell. Our work plan is ambitious, to say the least. Um and I think these are all, I mean, these all make sense to me. I, they're not all probably gonna get done, but uh or at least in the, in the short term. But I, you know, they're worth spending time on and developing and considering. Um and I've been, I've learned a lot in presentation. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you all for coming. Um because I think this is terrific. And it's, um just, just getting the update like this is, you are fulfilling your advisory role in a part of our part by being here tonight because I've learned about it, excited, no, now we're done. Others?
Yes. So I just wanted to say thank you. I, I agree, actually. Being, having an opportunity to engage with all of you and meet you, I mean, I think often on, I might, I might have met you. But um I, I, one of the things that we talk about with our work plan is we wanna kind of hold to everything through the, through two lenses. It's got a lens of diversity, equity and inclusion, so that everything that we do, that we work on, that is not a priority in a separate category, is a priority with all the things that we look at. And then we also use the sustainability lens, right? So um and that'll like, we're talking about the golf course or whatever. But I think that when it comes to a lot of, I, I actually agree with teacher. This is great, and if you guys are willing to put this much work into coming up with this and discussing, talking with the community, thank you. Cause it is a big ask. And probably everybody would be like, hey, if we've got, you know, hundreds of million dollars, just in all of it. So, but on a limited budget that they, they provide, you know, trying to get the engagement, to find out where the priorities are in the community is good. And my thing would be to make sure that when we're talking about those priorities with residents, to do so in a way that is inclusive of everyone's participation, not just serving golfers if they would like a golf club, right? You know, or, or asking at the rec center, but please, you know, consider other people who are other members of our community. How can they be engaged? Can this is something that they can enjoy, especially if we're asking them to do a bond and pay for it? I'd love to see that everybody in the whole community gets to participate. Um and, cause it is, it, I mean, when I first moved here, you know, almost twenty seven years ago, I was like, we have a golf. It's sweet. Like, this is amazing. And I, and I, when I first came to Colorado, I was like, oh, everybody must have one. Then I realized, no, Louisville is really special. So it's a big lift and very ambitious, but I actually like it, so thank you.
Other thoughts? Actually, actually, you're done, David. This is just, we're trying to get, and we've got another.
Yeah.
Um I'm sorry, for, yeah, go.
Just to add my thanks to everybody in the board that the work that you're doing. Just to add my thanks to everybody in the board that the work that you're doing is amazing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I think, um, I think the point about, that a number of us have made about taking care of the asset. Is really important. Uh, in legal terms, you don't want to commit based. And just letting something dilapidated, not really, um, uh, we really need to, to do something there. And I, we, we all will appreciate this. I think, um. Thumbs up for this work plan. Where you go. Go forth and advise.
Definitely. We will. Thank you so much.
And David, I didn't mean to. I did mean to interrupt, but you haven't been able. Well, why don't we take five minutes?
It doesn't make a difference to me, but I think at different points in time. Dilaborate and even just.
Yeah, I was a big blueback.
Yeah, I get, I think that, yeah. Didn't have chocolate in there? Did you pump that? I didn't have them. Where's your gavel? I'm only guessing.
Let's, for the committee, thank you very much. Um. Um, thank you very much. For what's coming to talk and I think we got some even say. We, um, we're pretty excited to engage with boards and commissions and get to share. I think. It's been a while since I, I think we've heard pretty loud and clear that. All of the advisors feel to, to have, to act and want to know that their ideals are being taken forward, cooked out, so. Uh, and advising and we want that. That's good. Um. The advisory boards would sort of telling all of the advisory boards is sort of similar. Uh, thing because they made a kind of policy decision last year, um, on many of the city. Um, first, advisory boards and design advisory, providing recommendations on policy issues. There's occasions for boards and board members to be, um, effective. By providing that, or in feedback to staff, the feedback should remain advisory. Um, that, um, that boards and commissions don't, um, direct staff. Um, that's been an issue sometimes with some of the boards and, and commissions, um, but it's not something even council can do. We, we have one person, um. Here, um, who we can, um, really direct and that's the city manager. We can't. And it's sometimes a surprise. We can't direct people. Um, we're directors or some of the managers or the people out in the field to, to, to take action. So. That's something that the city manager does and that's our past and with our collaboration. The advisory boards can, can submit and we invite you to submit recommendations for. The city's budget. As you know, this is the year which would be the two year budget. Uh, which will pass, you know, you know, in the fall. Um, and the key thing is that, um, like to have. Capital projects and other kinds of budget quests from advisory boards in by the twenty years, we is. Um, and what will happen? Well, they'll go certainly to staff. Right? As staff is, you know, preparing to work, like work out, but they're also going to be considered to be done. Um, so it's not like you're sort of dumping those, those recommendations into a box and the staff decides to take a full grade. You have a lot, um, that's, there's sort of two tracks that are going, um. The council is going to, uh, consider the work plans. Well, in the light of what council work plan is, and this is where, you know, this is where there's, sometimes there's. I think. I think sometimes unhealthy tension between, um, you know, between, um, I don't know, maybe advocates. Or particular, uh, subjects that are maybe outside of what council is thinking in terms of policy and, um. Taking the policy priorities that are in the council work plan. Uh, making recommendations that are consistent, but was not always exactly the same. That doesn't. They're insane, but. At least consistent with those priorities. Um. Boards and commissions aren't authorized to set policy. That's the sole discretion of council. And, um. The other thing is that we as council members may, um. Want to revise or, and that's part of the thing tonight is to look at, discuss, get input on why. Your work plan is the way it is, have you explained, um, and, and pointed out some highlights and. Other which really looking for those discussions and the mapping of the works and the mission of extraordinary have been really, really interesting. Thoughts and I expect will continue to be. Um, and the other thing is that there may be reasons for us to be again. Um, we're doing these at the beginning of the year, um. But there, there may be policy changes. There may be, um. And they can happen. Didn't expect to have a fire a few years ago and that kind of changed everybody's perspective. Didn't expect to have a pandemic. Changed everybody's priorities, including, uh, the priority of meeting in person. I know a lot of people really miss and I'm really excited. Number one, I'm excited for what you do because what you do is important. Really important. And the advice and, and council are going to be giving us and have been giving us, they appears. Is the rules of the city, but it's us. The, so with all those things in mind, that it's kind of the frame. Um, in which we're, we're starting, but what we'll do, I, I didn't know about, um. That presentation by your chair and then we'll have, um, probably a few questions from us and public comment. And then we can have a whole sort of discussion between us, which I think I will do. And then finally, I will talk about the work plan and, um, you know, council has, uh, thoughts about it. Share those and try to give you the guidance at the end about, uh, whether. What he said, we approved those, but, or those work plans. But I know that you've done a tremendous. A lot of work to get to this point, so let it, uh, turn it over to.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for having us. So we're going to go through, uh, and I think this is a. All right. So, uh, I don't guess her Kevin because, uh. Uh, Josh, Kevin.
So we're gonna.
You know, all of us, maybe we should, we can, I forgot, but we did this at the very beginning.
It's, I, I think, I think we do.
Uh, addressing somebody you want to know, just, just ask them.
Uh, yeah, I will. Okay. Uh, so we want to just take you through a little bit of, uh, what we did last year, a couple of things, uh, we got done, just to give a sense of sort of accomplishments. Thinking the work plan was proposed, uh, and then we have some questions we came up with, uh, or whatever that exactly fits in. I'll let you tell me where it fits in. Uh, but first I want to start off with kind of what our role is, uh, and you know, you've sort of covered a lot of it. So I'll kind of, you know, maybe repeat a few things, but, uh. But we pretty agreed. So, you know, we, and, and maybe even one more, uh, just in context here is. Sustainability is one of the fastest moving topics that I think we're experiencing today. So, you know, whether it's, uh, on the national level, regional or local, uh, there is, there's something coming out all the time in the news, in policy, you know, anywhere, technology. And so. We need two hours. It's almost impossible for us to be able to keep up with staff who's working on this fast moving topic and three hundred plus hours at once. Right? So just, I, I just want to frame it like that because there's going to be so much that kind of flows through the staffs. That off across their desk and through the office and, you know, it's kind of their job to pull us in for those two hours and prioritize what we need to know. Two hours long. So as we talk a little bit about what we do, just to kind of recognize the difference in this fast moving space of like how much time we're spending on this or we're allocated to this. So we're providing feedback to staff on, you know, their, their programs, uh, program recommendations, projects. Uh, there's a lot going on. You'll, you'll see all that. Uh, ledger recommendations, as you mentioned, every two years. So provide, uh, quite a bit of feedback on that. Uh, council work plan recommendations. They'll always hear from us. If you don't hear from us, it is something wrong. Uh, as we have, we have things to say. Same thing in our memos. So, uh, oftentimes you ask us for feedback. On a piece of policy, we'll write your memo, let you know what we think. Other times we just think you need a memo to hear from us. So we'll craft up some memos. We spend a good amount of time doing that. Uh, we will get into some research and analysis, not, not too much for the limited time and when we text, but to some degree, we'll look at. We'll look at some of the recommendations from consultants and just sort of provide, you know, some feedback on those, you know, like internal decarbonization plan, for example. And we might take our, do our little map on the side, you know, provide some, some, uh, uh, thoughts on that. A little bit of outreach and engagement. So there are groups, you know, within, within Louisville that, you know, maybe staff doesn't know a little about. People that represent key groups, key organizations. Uh, I think we do a pretty good job of identifying who those organizations are. And say, hey, you know, maybe they need to know about the sustainability program, you know, let us make that connection or let us get the word out. Uh, so we'll play, uh, a little bit of a role there. Uh, we also write, uh, help staff write newsletters every other month. So if you ever see the sustainability spotlight. Uh, we, we play a little of that as well. But again, above all, um, the work is very, so hopefully. So we're going to move into our accomplishments, which I can be your health data accomplishments. So. So twenty twenty-three highlights, hopefully, uh, you're, they're really familiar to you. So I'll kind of cruise to them. so twenty twenty-three highlights, hopefully, uh, you're really familiar to you. So I'll kind of cruise through them because I know we want to meet at the twenty twenty-four work plan and some questions. Uh, you know, we have a, a bag tax, um, those funds to different programs. So we provided some feedback, uh, on the recommended programs to the bag tax. We also assisted, and this is kind of a heavy lift, where we do a big coordination for the spring, uh, spring cleanup, spring cleaning event. And so, you know, we work with the church and, um, we work with, uh, eco weight, uh, recycling, uh, eco cycle, hazardous waste folks. And we have people drop off their gas lawnmowers. We drain, we don't drain it. We watch people drain it. But we do part of the traffic and we ran, we did drainage the first year and it was really, uh, a safety issue. So no more draining.
That's what I thought you meant if you said heavy wood.
Yeah, it was a heavy wood. And so, so we, uh, now we pay someone to do that. But, uh, it's a, it's a fun program. We get to see a lot of people come through dropping off their old paints, their old gasoline, their old lawnmowers. What did, you know, seventy-five pieces of gas lawn equipment, uh, just last year. And so then I'll just recycle and folks get a voucher if they would like for an electric, uh, sort of like, um, it's not a hundred percent, uh, one for one on the cost covered. But, you know, it's a significant discount. Me this year, uh, we spent a good amount of time on the decarbonization, the community decarbonization plan. So we provided recommendations to staff, uh, on, uh, on that, provide some input upfronts. How should we run a little bit? Like how many times we got, we should search base, you know, with the state global group. We did something similar for solar united neighbors. Uh, and then we also, uh, we had some representation on as a conversation player. You guys haven't seen that or talked about, so I realized that's something I got. You know, we talked about the sustainability spotlight already. Hopefully we read those and we have some really good writers here that can find those. We also, oh, last year we came up with Louisville's own electrification rebates. So energy smart through Boulder County, um, they do a, they facilitate this program for a lot of communities. Uh, we were one that didn't have a program, so it really facilitated it for us. We launched it last year. We put some money into that. It didn't get a really fast uptake. So you can see, you know, over thirty homes have, uh, taken advantage of these programs. And it's what's nice about incentives is they, you have federal, state, even Boulder County tax incentives. So these things start to, you know, and Excel and utility, these things really start to stack up. So you might look at it and go, oh, like, does our two hundred and fifty dollars make a difference? Maybe not alone, but with the other few thousand dollars, you know, and the other two, the other five hundred, uh, you know, it starts to overcome the current cost difference between, you know, the newer technologies. We've been reacting to this. We also, uh, did a collaboration with our two neighboring cities Lafayette Superior and their sustainability force. So we, we sort of noticed over the last couple of years, we kind of replicate each other's events. Uh, and then so last year we all did eco toper fest together. And so that makes a lot of sense. Like why, why would we all, why would we each run an event, you know, competing events perhaps? And so we got together, shared a lot of ideas, best practices. I think we came out of that with another list of ideas of how we can better use our, uh, our resources together, pull them together and not, you know, not again, um, repeat, repeat events and repeat activities. So it was a good, a good opportunity to kind of hear from the neighboring sustainability force. Oh, let's see. We talked a little bit about staff memos, hopefully gas station moratorium, dark sky, and our plan, which I had two memos and, um, our work plan. So, so five memos last year. And we'll talk a little later about and ask you one of our questions is our memos kind of the best way for us to communicate with you. For hearing what you guys think about that. So our work plan priorities for twenty twenty-four proposed. They start off with our community decarbonization plan. This is different than the internal decarbonization plan or municipal or whatever. So you haven't seen it, it, the decarbonization plan, but it's something that, you know, a fair amount of time. I think you saw a midway check, uh, checkpoint last fall. Uh, the plan is sort of, you know, ready for review. So that's a top priority. Uh, with that, we're going to, we've been providing feedback, uh, we're going to provide a letter of support, uh, and then help us in how to ensure that such, so that's a pretty big priority. The internal decarbonization plan. So this is one you're much more familiar with. So on this one, we provided feedback. At this point, it's going to be a bit more about us, um, just checking in with the, with our staff. He is on, how's it going? Getting regular updates. You know, do we need to, we need to push on the gas a little bit more? Um, is something starting to break? Can we slow it down? Uh, you know, again, advisory feedback kind of capacity on, on that plan. Um, bag tax, uh, programs, again, we're just sort of, we're just staying in the loop here. You know, if something's working, if it seems like it's not working, hey, why, no, what's going on here? Can we make a change or I've heard on the street or, you know, I've been in some businesses and here's some other data points I'm hearing. Um, just providing more, like, better feedback and advice to staff. We do have a number of, uh, events planned for this year. So we will, um, this is all, there's more detail in your packet. Uh, but the events include a series of, uh, home electrification workshops. So there's going to be three of those starting in May. Um, and we're putting on those with our, um, neighboring cities. Uh, we have our spring cleaning event again, and flush out these old gas lawnmowers. Those things are spewing out. Fumes, they're killing us all. Um, it'll be doing some farmer's market, tabling, uh, Labor Day parade and then like another toper fest. So a few activities, again, as much as possible, joining up, creating the best efficiencies with our neighboring communities, which really helps for volunteers. It helps for, you know, a number of, uh, resources. Boy, there's a lot of these. All right. So we're on five through ten, just so you know. Okay. All right. So regular sustainability communications, um, you know, in this one, there's a, the evening, there's a rules letter, there's a sustainable spotlight. Um, you know, we also go into other, um, other places to print materials, bills. Uh, so if we provide, you know, feedback. That's a bit of a, um, business as usual for us, just kind of providing content and feedback on content. Uh, this will be a, um, a year where we provide input and recommendations for the budget. So that'll be something that we can do last year that we're sort of excited to, to lead me into this year and not last year again. Yeah, but when we did it two years ago, too, it was after fire. So things were, you know, very sensitive budget wise. So hopefully two years later, they're less. They seem like they're less, that's the best thing, but maybe they will be. Um, let's see. Oh, the comprehensive plan. So comprehensive plan's coming up. We had a presentation on what that process would look like. We're very excited to kind of weigh in with some recommendations and be involved in the process and get our, um, you know, fellow, fellow community members who really care about sustainability also involved in the con plan process. I think it's a great opportunity, uh, for us to lean in sustainability. We will certainly then be working on towards the end of the year on our twenty twenty-five work plan and give you some recommendations to you guys for your work plan. So we spend at least one meeting talking about that. And any other initiatives that come up that require, um, research and analysis, like I said, um, you know, we like to crunch the numbers a little bit, do some other data sources, sort of validate, verify, um, you know, some of the data that we're using, you know, as a city that makes any sustainability differences. And then where possible, uh, we're sort of keeping our eyes out for other grant opportunities. So again, fast moving space, money sometimes just pops up out of nowhere, right? New grant. Oh my goodness, you have till the end of the month to fill out this application. So, you know, maybe, maybe staff doesn't see it, want to let them know, um, you know, maybe even another letter of support. It's not a city. So, you know, we want to like jump on those, offer those funding opportunities really fast. So that's for a plan. Uh, did you want to, was it a pause time for comment and then questions or did you want to get the questions or how did you want to sequence?
Why don't you say something about the questions?
Yeah.
You have, and we, we have them up there.
Yeah.
If there's any specific one that you want to highlight or, or
I mean, trim them down to get the same list. I would say the questions came from, uh, they're either ongoing types of conversation that we had and we went, oh, this is our chance. Like let's, let's finally hear it from council. Or there were ones that each of the members had, or maybe even someone, um, someone from, yeah, I guess someone somewhere, I'm going to start some of these questions. So, um, that's what I'd say.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we take, um, council questions, not in your questions, okay? Um, but then we'll take some public comment and then we can have a discussion in part about your work plan and in part about questions that you're raising for us. They're, they're great questions. Useful. This is exactly what these meetings are partial. Are there any questions about that?
I have a question. It's about one of the questions, but let me just, because your, your last, your last question to me, I want to know your answer as to whether you think the memos are effective. I, I personally like them, but, but you included this question here for reasons. I, I think there's some of the answer.
Yeah. I mean, we spend, so we spend a fair amount of time, um, you know, so the memo requires that we all get on the same page with what we want to say. And that's not really the hard part, but then we have to put it in written format. We need to make sure it gets to you, um, at a certain time. So there is a little bit of overhead required. So if you find them valuable, uh, or you prefer another method that was more efficient, then we can, I think, talk back.
Right? Other questions?
Um, why don't we take a little bit of public comment? Does anybody have, you got too many republic here?
Good evening. I'm Don March, three seven eight, Grouse Court. Thank you for your work. Really appreciate it. I hate to be a, you know, uh, Donny Downer, but I'm happy to give up on it and you guys, you know, to do the right thing for future generations. I've already talked to you about climate change. Now I think it's probably past the point of no return for saving life on earth. But I'd also like to talk to you about biodiversity. Um, many experts feel that unless we can take drastic action, uh, human civilization, civilization has no more than maybe a hundred years old on earth. And the, uh, the solutions are drastic. So I ask that you do what you can along those lines. Uh, one of the solutions is to, with birth control, to reduce the population on human population or from eight going down to one very less than one billion. Hard to do and take a lot off. Uh, the other is to concentrate populations in the country. For all the benefits of saving the earth, um, half of earth. Um, this is a book written by Edward Wilson. He's a Pulitzer Prize winner. Um, so he and many others feel that we need to set aside half the earth to let our diversity recover from what human civilization has done to it. So, uh, I, well, and I'll just point this out. I'm glad you're sitting down, but it's been suggested, uh, really gone for our goal for you to be ready back to open space, you know, to help achieve these goals. So I just ask you to keep the climate change and biodiversity top of my vision basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I'm not. All right. Discussion, um, and I'm, uh, let's see, I guess the council have a particular question. I frankly, I, I would like to get, there's a lot of questions. And I think that's good. I mean, in terms of the questions you think I asked, most of the board answered that fewer. I think that's to me just represents spend a lot of time thinking about. I know and I know how hard you work on this, um, this work. So should we, uh, about if we dive into the questions? And then we can go back. Um, all right. So the first one is that state Colorado passed law prohibiting the use of small gas, wrong, wrong equipment at public entities starting in twenty twenty-five and previously policy plan to support electric equipment conversion, which is abroad, said the state plan. What is council's level, level of interest in pursuing this topic?
I would be interested in pursuing this topic and all of your, um, efforts. Um, I, I know, you said something about only spending two hours a month on this. I know that you spend a lot more, each of you spends a lot more than two hours a month. It's two hours that you get together with staff and come up with recommendations, kind of consolidating. The knowledge in this board is a very high. And I really appreciate all the efforts put into it. So, uh, yes, I would be interested in any programs that you would be interested in pursuing personal. I also appreciate the things you've already done, especially for the fire survivors. Just the fact that she went out and, and helped staff and got all of these grants and, and rebates and all of these programs that up and then informed everyone what was available. That was a big lift and I really appreciated it and to the point where my house will be electric with pumps and it's all balancing all the lovely things. Um, and I like the idea, like I said at the last meeting I was at. I like the idea of giving tours to people who are in considering doing things to their house for remodels and or new construction, either one, to tour houses that have done it. And they can see that, yes, that works. And yes, that has saved us money in the long run. And just continue the whole process. So it doesn't stop with just fires. So thank you.
Yeah. So as an opening comment, again, I think, you know, being part of the selection, um, committee that we are to pick people on the outside has been difficult all five years of the council, like because the people that are fire are just remarkable. And so people that we have on the board are, are absolutely experts of different sorts and different experiences and bring, bring something, uh, different to the board to you. And it's, it's one of those sought after in highly competitive boards, you know, planning commission outside of my opinion. And so, yeah, you know, just these amazing humans giving great, um, expertise and, and, um, and advice and counsel to us. And so I really appreciate that. So like on question one, you know, I, um, the else have previous direct, uh, community wide policy plan to support electric equipment conversion. Like I love the idea. So this is obviously like, okay, city Louisville, no more, uh, you know, small gas things, you know, like vendors coming in, you know, landscape companies seems like low hanging fruit. The last one being like John next door, you gotta get rid of your mower, right? That's the hardest one. They're like, make an individual change, you know, to put a ban on, you know, gas powered equipment for an individual household, uh, user, like it's kind of feels like those are the steps to go down. And so certainly from the bottom up, those incentives, the things you guys are doing, trading in, noticing like I have an electric lawnmower that doesn't need to be, you know, plugged into the cable. I mean, that's the old version of like, well, I don't want a cord as I'm mowing my lawn. So for people to realize like, what is it that I love so much about gasoline that I need to be like, oh, it's like, no, it's mower and it cuts your grass. It's fantastic. And so the more and more people that use it, the, the, the better. And so I think, you know, over time it gets easier and easier to get on the stick part of the characteristic and say, yeah, we're, we're banning gas lawyers at this point because we've gotten to this point where the city doesn't use them, the vendors don't use them, and most people trade them in any way. And so actually you can't, right? So keeping us going on that, on that path, I think is, is great. And that's just, I think, one example. There's a lot of, a lot of examples like that, that we're, um, trying to get to the end faster than, and so I'm sure you guys all experienced this too, and see these are really great, really great initiatives and they always come with like by twenty fifty, like it was twenty twenty-four, like that, that's it was twenty twenty four, like that that all sounded really good until you said twenty fifty. You know, it's, yeah, it is hard, though, like it's gonna take time. We realize things take time, but then setting those aggressive goals um that are also attainable. And I think that's the piece where I don't pretend to have the expertise, and so it's really great to have you know, yourself say like, this is something we can legitimately accomplish by twenty twenty eight, by twenty thirty five, by twenty forty, like what, depending on how big it is and broad it is. These are reasonable goals that we can try to achieve and then follow our progress towards. Setting this first one will require some similar comments, but this first one for me is like, yeah, I absolutely support the idea this conversion from gas powered to electric powered equipment, and especially as our power grid changes and now the the way I'm charging my my um mower is more and more efficient. All those things are great. So that's a that's a lot for this. Granted, than that answer, but um yeah, totally support that. And I think, sorry, would be helpful. So we have so many uh some at some point at the end of the year, we're going to provide you guys a work plan, like what we think is a recommended work plan uh or what we like to say the work plan. And so we can use so so many bullets. We need to know, it's helpful for us to know, is this like, is this a bullet we should use for the work plan? Is it a priority? That's kind of just a giving you some more framing of why we're asking this question.
I mean, I, you know, obviously, this is where I'd love to know mechanics of like again, we need to make this help, right? And you mentioned it's like it doesn't get you all the way there, but you're talking about like seventy five percent, fifty, like what? And those rebates funded by city, right, fund those as a city.
Oh, we we have funded them, but the state is now funding.
State is like, okay.
So thirty percent of itself is.
Just thirty percent. And then have we ever like approached Home Depot lows? No, because they have, you know, community, you know, I'm sure requirements that it'd be like, hey, look at it, you know, and then increase that to it's a fifty percent or something. I mean, have we ever talked to them? Because again, it gets them business.
About lowering the price?
Yeah, I mean, like you, we get the rebate from the state, you know, whatever, but I'm just, again, thirty percent. You know, fifty percent, you start to be like, okay, I can justify that electric law. I'm just trying to think, you know, obviously, hundred percent be a no brainer, but it's expensive. So just thinking about the mechanics of it, because I like I love the idea, but it's gonna be having, you know, heavier lift. So if we incentivize residents, do it. I'm just thinking of always outside the box, right? It creates the state does that, but yeah, Home Depot makes, they've got a lot of money.
Do uh they uh and they've been gracious in some time to offer some special deals on our spring cleaning events. Uh I think there are a lot, I guess, in short, there's a lot of things we can do.
Sure.
Uh and and I think it would be one of these things where it's like stick is out there and we do kind of like, uh we've been doing carrot in the last few years, right? It's been a carrot approach this whole time, and we've been pretty successful with it. I mean, uh I know it was just seventy something devices this last year, um year before, you know, we were above a hundred. Um so carrot's been working, I think at some point, probably will box stick. Uh and so, you know, uh I don't think we don't have all the details on exactly how that would work, but one of the good news front is that Home Depot doesn't do any more gas uh power lawn equipment. So um anyone needing lawn mower, they're not getting it, uh gas lawn, they're not getting it.
I guess I I wanna raise one thing, because I don't want to talk so much about the the specifics of some of these, because I think you're asking this question of whether we have pursue them. But one thing I, you know, I'm looking back at our at our plan, because that's part of what we tasked you guys to um is to tell us, you know, what um things uh work or what what things you want us to or we want you to focus on or or perhaps be, you know, uh be prioritized. I I think I'm looking was looking, just a second, um at the topmost priorities. Um there's there's sort of two baskets. There's sustainability programs, which I don't know if there this kind of falls into that bucket. That's a medium level thing under our uh plan. There's reduction greenhouse gases, right? Um which is a a high priority. And as you probably know, or we probably should say, those priorities aren't necessarily in lexical order, right? One through B, they're uh it changes depending on the schedule and so forth. Um but as I'm looking back at that, the priorities that that we agreed upon really focused more on the decarbonization piece. And I I think that's that's a question, you know, that other uh that I've got to weigh into, because that's when uh this is not to say it's not important, it's to say the question that you asked, which is, is it, would it be helpful? And I think that, you know, at least there's an argument to be made that is outside the work plan. Um but I I'd very much like to hear other council members on that. Because I know this better. And I know this is important. One of my best friends was like the head of the herd in Colorado, and she has focused and devoted a huge amount of time to this very issue, the legislation and so forth. So I I know how this grabs people. I also know that there's some equity issues baked. And there's also some um issues with respect to um asset management. You know, the tech, you know, letting, you know, equipments of the run its useful life and be replaced, and there's controversy around that too. But I'd be very interested in what other council members think about this consistent with our work point, because part of what we're not doing in this is changing the work, unless that's a different discussion, but I think depending how long this part, the work point is a reasonable question.
Yeah, so I I think it is. Um I think it falls under greenhouse gas and sustainability initiatives. Um I share, I think, the comment that um we should probably stay in incentive territory and advisory, I'm not ready to um have the city take away my gas law more than I force. Um you're just because I don't have a binding. And um so to me, to me, it fits. It's worth spending time on, isn't my number one thing, no.
So I would I would say that we would address the, actually, the first three questions, which are just like a general part of this. The first one was LSE's role and responsibilities. Do you agree that LSE's advisory role versus having more autonomy and decision-making capabilities? Um I agree with my council member. I think his stick approach is not what Louisville needs. I think the carrot approach is what the community deserves. And I think the residents deserve the carrot approach. They deserve that kind of respect and opportunity rather than being told, you do not know what we know. And I know, I think that's unfortunately the message that comes with new and great um changes. A lot of people who are well informed and well intentioned. But I think to help the people along who maybe don't have that the depth of knowledge that you guys do, and we would like your depth of knowledge, because it is vast, right? But if we can do it through incentives, through education, rather than through legislation, you get a lot more friendly support and people are like really motivated and excited to participate. If they start with kids, because kids will get the parents to do almost anything. You know, they they learn like the better way than the parents will tend to follow. Um so I I actually appreciate in this role having really smart people who definitely spent, I agree, more than two hours a month on this topic. Uh I think Josh alone spends twenty at least uh coming and and getting us information, like telling us and the whole community thing that we otherwise which is not know or have access to. So I like that staying as an advisor, having that be the focus. Um and I think so I was looking at the the community decarbonization thing, but like you, you were talking about the comprehensive plan, the involvement with your with the board in that. I would like to see when it comes to working with the residents, that that actually remains staff's responsibility. We have a sustainability staff. I think the staff's role is to communicate with residents at the comprehensive plan gatherings and and give them information. Um I was really curious to know, and I'm hoping that you guys will come and like, again, memos, I I agree, I love them. They're very, very helpful, because it gives us time to really read and absorb your good ideas um and recommendations. So I was curious to know what some of the ideas that you had were, and I'd love to continue to work on it for the process. It says, here you have ideas for um processes for the for the comprehensive plan process, like what to do, how to implement more sustainability measures into that. And I I'm actually curious, because I was like, what are some of those? Like, how how do you implement more sustainability into that conversation? Um and a community decarbonization plan, I kind of look at the gas power lawn things, right? As as part of that, is that correctly, because you guys are really, that's a big part, right? For community-wide stuff, it's everything.
Yeah, it's 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 not really a big part of it.
It's electrification in the houses.
Yeah, buildings, uh mostly buildings, a little bit of transportation.
Okay. Let's do one thing. You you if I realize I actually started on the second page of the LSE's questions, I apologize that um I think, wait, yeah, well, well, there's there's sort of feedback, there's feedback, right? And then there's, I'm sorry.
Feedback.
But start with question, the question, but there is, there is city council feedback. So why don't we, let's take one of them at a time. I think I, because I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be confusing for us, that we'll all be like, you know, for each Republican council member, just give me a separate piece, but um the LSE roles and responsibilities.
Sorry, we gotta round out when we go back to the.
The the gas? Oh, do you have any other thoughts about that?
So to me, it does fit in with the city council work, and I agree, and the council member have their own that. Um I'm not gonna get into the details and propose what it might look like, but I am interested in reading more.
Others?
I will, I will say that um I also support the carrot rather than the stick approach. Uh and information is critical. But even if we get Home Depot to only sell electric lawn equipment, that doesn't mean people are gonna go to Boulder and buy gas. So there has to be some kind of regulation that would go along with it that for the usage of that equipment, not just the purchase.
Sorry, I'm good that.
I think my my take on this is um really what I heard earlier. I I'm not, I don't quite agree with Deb on the regulation piece. I don't know with it. I I wouldn't say that that's a I mean, you know, that's that's for you guys to suggest to us, right? Um but I think what what you heard from this, and I agree with that rule as too, that that we have as seen from from bias, expressed a lot of interest in trying to consider the incentives more than the issue, at least at the first instance. And there may be compelling reasons why we ought to, that even when you regulate, then you gotta figure out, well, you're involved in, what are you gonna do if you're gonna suggest to the city that it go pull turkey, you know, like like that is that that's gonna, I think that's gonna be a challenge, but is that something that folks wanna do? And I heard John Parker's phone, I mean, I can't, I don't speak for him. I wouldn't dare do that, but I I think there are people who won't say no, we'd rather all of the media will stop everybody from using as far as we people respond. I'm a limpet, but I, that's just me. And there's interesting questions you have, but I like council member, you're a gentleman. I don't want to get more of the needs than that, because I know you guys, I know all of us have thought about this a lot. I'd rather for uh just, I I'd rather get some suggestions. And I I think it it fits with that greenhouse gas reductions. Um I don't wear, so I see topics and then the examples after it that they don't include this, but I also think that there's that they're not, it's not a statute, it's a guide for our people and reducing greenhouse gases. So I I agree with that. Any other comments about that?
Could I add something first about that? Um I mean, thinking about the bag tax and how how health drives behavior, right? And I think we're all we think about the carrot, 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 and eventually with climate change, the the sticks are happening, they're happening at the level of state level, county level, and um you know, the amount of plastic bags that we've been keeping out of the landfill is astonishing because of policy, right? The amount of greenhouse gases we'll be able to reduce from the awful gas burning lawn equipment in our community will be astounding. Um we can we can live in the world of carrots as long as we want to, to make our citizens happy. We are living in the middle of a climate crisis, so that's why we have that as one of our questions. Um and also, because the council spends so great intersectionality of EBI and sustainability, we can use that tax money maybe down the road. We can use money towards supporting those people in our community to use money to transition to electric lawn equipment for their lawn businesses that maybe they don't have. So thinking about how, yes, we all love the carrots, but at some point, policy does drive behavior and um.
I appreciate that. That's why I think it's not, it isn't uh I don't want you to interpret what we've said as saying don't don't advise us on that, because we're not gonna listen to that advice. I think there's, you know, you're gonna make uh your recommendations and we'll be considering and and I think that you're gonna have, you know, some familiar things to say regardless of what policy suggestions you have, honestly, so.
Um what would be, just to put it bow on this one, timing wise, like I sort of heard it kind of fits in the work plan, shove it under decarbonization. Um we were even just sort of thinking maybe next year's work plan, but I guess what what would you? I I heard a willingness to hear maybe recommendations for not sort of more thought out plan. When would you, what we kind of?
You know, I, why don't we, why don't we hold that question until we kind of go over some of these, because the timing is is probably a question that we can think about in terms of some of the other priorities you identified. It's a really good question, so just hold it back. Yeah. Um alright, so let's go back to the roles of responsibilities. Uh do we agree with LSE's advisory role versus LSE having more autonomy and decision-making capabilities? And I think I can I think I can answer that based on the policy that passed last fall is yes, um that it is um by advisory rule that I kind of describe, and I hope I describe it consistent with what your understanding is. Um that LSE has technically never had decision-making capability or authority. Um I know you do things. You're you're a advisory group or or that does things and wants to do things, and we've done some cool things. I think the key there is working with Kida and making sure, because she's sort of not, not so much a check. Um part of it is you know, as you know, she is incredibly knowledgeable about this stuff too. I think you guys are as well, which is, you all operate at a very high level together, and that's good. But she, we know things about what's going on elsewhere in city government timing for what's in front of council and those things, you know, I think in terms of doing some of the activities, just just check with her about those. I don't want, it's too easy to say yes or no, but I don't think that's really, I don't think that's what long, I think you know, uh Kida's a staff member, at least, who is the best connection to that. And it it will get to us, there's some question. Yes.
Captain oriented.
So um when I read this question, I looked at one. I put myself in the shoes of the person. I put myself in the shoes of the person who wrote this question, and I dug a layer deeper. The way I interpret this, and it could be off, is that someone asking this question, might ask it because they don't feel valued or they're unheard. They don't feel like people are doing their most, that they're not getting stuff done as fast as they want. Could be off. That's how I interpret this question. And I want you to know that I do value you, hear you, and I do enjoy my most. And I do want, uh, as far as the pace of things go. Listen, I wish all this was done yesterday. Like, I work in biotech during the day, and then I slam on the brakes, and I work in government at night, and it's a huge change. Like, I wish these things would go faster. Um, but that's, that's how I interpreted this question. And I just wanted to take this and to say that you guys didn't get to make the first one, right?
That's a really good point, is that you should ask it.
And by the way, all these, uh, we wanted to like make up the state to put that on the page. So happy to elaborate on any of these, even before, like, when we get to the question, happy to provide our context, just so you guys aren't having. Well, I mean, I think you, your, your, uh, very last part of what you said, kind of like not moving fast enough. I think there's a strong desire to move faster in the climate crisis. And whether it's government, whether it's a staff of just two, um, you know, set the path in the middle of space, that there's very hard, like, you know, you're like, you're on the edge there, but there's like, it like, here's the edge. Like, I could be right there and doing something, but instead I'm like right here and advising. And, um, like, how, like, I'm so close to being able to make an impact, but I'm not. Um, and so I think that's the, this is the, and then these are anonymous, by the way. This is, this is my interpretation of, uh, what I sort of felt across the board. Um, I guess we'll elaborate in a minute.
By the way, you do make a big contribution. I mean, please don't in any way think just because you're not the person saying, do this today, we think this is going to be policy. What you do in just the years that this board is going to run has been tremendously valuable to this community and outside of it, so thank you.
Um, I mean, I think we're good, or good, thank you. We weren't fishing for compliments or anything like that. I think kind of what Todd is kind of trying to explain is because facts are backing up climate change. The priorities of the city with EDI and sustainability are great. And we know with the timeline of the facts of climate change, we want to get here. And we want to help everyone kind of get their heads out of the sand about the urgency of the facts. So yes, a city, of course, has comprehensive priorities across the board. In our view, the facts, climate change overrides them all, because it affects everything. So that's very good.
Uh, shall we move on to the?
Can I say one thing first?
Of course you can.
Um, listening to all these, these comments, the thing that kept going through my mind was, we, I would appreciate more information about what the impact of climate change is going to have if we don't ban gas. If we don't go through electric cars and electric homes and, and make people understand, I guess, what the implications of them not doing these things will be. And as down set a hundred years, I don't think it's going to take a hundred years. But there are going to be impacts in 10 years that people are not going to like. There are already impacts that people don't like with weather changes, with the fires, with flooding, with water shortages, with all of the things that are already happening, and people still won't back away from. So, and I would maybe request some information about what, what would be the consequences if we don't do anything?
You live with a climate scientist, Deb, I think you know.
Yes, I know.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, because that first question, I think, you know, I think the nice thing that I don't want us to sort of forget is that I think we have a sustainability, uh, board, advisory board, and council and the staff, they're all pretty well aligned. There's not like, we're not having, you guys like, really need to do something, maybe a bunch of council people are like, no, no. Um, there's not a lot of like direct conflict with the science or with the importance or, you know, it's very high in priority, this is what I'm saying. And so there's a lot of agreements. It's the how, the what, the how fast, right? Um, what, what priority, when? Um, and, you know, I think there could be lots of really positive comments and then no action, right? And that can be really frustrating. Um, and I don't see that actually as a current, it's be like a lot of action, but is the right action? Is it enough action? Is it, is it, what are there? And to your first question, I think, you know, again, a lot of extras in the room, so I don't mean this to be like, uh, anyways. Our job, right, is to give policy direction to Jeff and to Kayla and say, hey, this is really important to us. Bring back lots of great projects and spend lots of money that we've allocated towards this. Um, and then her job is to be educated in the first place, informed, getting new information, and using your expertise to bring great ideas back to us for final approval, right? And so I think the thing is like, well, no, you guys aren't the decision makers, but in a lot of ways, in some ways, we aren't. It's like, we already made that decision. We said, let's make an impact, let's do decarbonization, let's go. And then what we expect is Kayla come back with, okay, well, this is what we're doing next, this is what we're doing next. And I sure as hell hope she's getting a lot of good feedback from you all about what's the highest priority and what's best to do next. And, you know, if you guys are being too bold on something or, or whatever, that's a conflict between your group and Kayla to then come back to us with a unified, okay, this is what we are recommending to council now as the number one priority. And I don't think the number one priority for Mel's app is lawn doors, or it's not like the number one thing, but it's definitely something that's in the list of things to do, right? And so we've got lots of stuff going on, decarbonization being certainly internal and community, huge, right? So I think, you know, I think you guys have your autonomy in the sense that you, that's my, that's been my experience the last four or five years, you guys are kind of doing your thing, and I hope you feel like you're part of the decision-making process in your ability to, to bring these great, I, I'm not bringing any of these ideas. I mean, that's, that's another thing to think about, right? As a council member for four and a half years, I'm not bringing sustainability ideas to this table, ever. The ideas are coming through you guys and from our neighbors and from Kayla and from other people. Like, I'm not the ideas person, but I hear these great ideas and we go, oh, that's a good, we should do that, we should, oh, we don't have enough money for that. How can we allocate, can we get grants? It's like, so I really, I hope you guys do know that in, in a very, very powerful way for me, you're absolutely part of the decision-making process. And none of us on our own are decision makers, right? It's all this really slow process of us having to do that all together, which does slow it all down. Um, and so I would just, I guess I'll stop there, so that anyone else wants to talk on personally.
Yeah, I, I hesitate to say it, I think, I think what's, these are two different roles, right? And I don't, I don't want to use language in a way that's going to confuse. I mean, we do believe in the advisory role. Having more autonomy and decision-making capability suggests to me something that's different from advising. And I don't want to suggest, oh, no, you, you have, I mean, you don't have decision-making capability. That is the message. You have tremendous ability to generate important information that we will be using. And in that respect, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to mislead. I think, at least for my part now, if, you know, if, if others disagree, then I think we've probably got to go back and revisit this for a lot of boards initiatives, because we're trying to, you know, put uniform, well, I mean, that's why we've, we've done this exercise. And if that's, you know, we, we may want to have a discussion with ourselves about whether we buy that. But I, I, I don't want to make, I don't want to suggest autonomy means you go out and can do your own thing. I think what you can do, what I'm suggesting, is you can do a lot of that within the framework that of being an advisory committee that actually does things in addition to just writing stuff like, you know, I could do this. Well, talk, talk to Kayla. And there may be, there may be, heck, some of us may kind of be involved in some of these efforts, which if indeed, you know, she comes back to us with them, you know, that may be even better for everybody. But I, I just want to be really clear. I, I don't think we're talking about being, like, many council on, on sustainability. You're an important part of the process, but not on your own. I think we're on the same page. Well, and I'd be interested if there's other, you know, and I don't want to minimize.
I don't.
Okay, well, leave it. Yeah. Anybody else?
Okay.
All right, so let's, uh, let's, let's move on. Um, does the work plan align with the business and the expectations and the needs of the council work um, on sustainability purpose? Because that's, say, yeah, so what accounts the numbers? And by the way, thank you very much for this presentation. So this shows me that you guys have spent a lot.
Yeah, I, I don't see anything in the work plan that is contrary to what our, what our work like priorities are. Again, it's all sitting within that, so I see the community carbonization, internal carbonization, uh, back tax, sustainable programs. Again, just watching what, how that gets implemented and, you know, the events happen great, and they all are in line with what we're trying to do. Um, communications have been fantastic. Um, you know, division budget recommendations, again, that's advisory recommending, and we'll take that in. I think, again, so I, I, I think these are all fantastic. And, you know, Kayla, I'm sure you're, you enjoyed getting, you know, a hundred eyes looking at something instead of just two or four that you're going to look at. So getting input and sending things along is fantastic. So I think there's nothing in the work plan that I see that I'm like, wait, no, 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 I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be working on that. Kind of the bandwagon that she accomplished, but they all accuse me.
I'm, I'm going to ask, yeah. Thumbs up, Matt?
And a double thumbs up for the grant stuff, like, serious kudos to you guys, bro. Like, they'll check you out.
So the next one is how, because the memos are already created, even though our council on sustainability talks and versus a. Frequent and then two-way, I think we've already talked about that. Um, the only thing I would ask is, so Kayla, why? Because it's a public, we're a public entity, we want to get them disseminated in packets and other, I think that's important. Um, but I can't say enough how much I appreciate those, because there's like two deep divers, right? And those are very helpful to me. Um, all right. Uh, but what, when you say a more frequent and two-way dialogue, I probably should have asked, what do you mean by that?
Uh, you know, we're not really, there's no, um, no one responding back to the memo and saying, um, well, can you go to a little weaver in this area? Or I don't quite agree with that, but so it's, um, it's kind of like putting a little message on a pigeon, and then you like send it off. And then you sort of like, you know, you're sort of like, wait and see what happens. It's like an explosion or like a smoke signal, you know, you don't really get a specific, there's no message back in the vision.
And that's a classic personal analogy, but hopefully you're getting the feedback from Kayla, that, because she'll get feedback from all of us. And hopefully that's coming through you, back to you.
How, how does that, we deal with those shares and stuff?
Typically, we'll include an LSAT memo and a council packet, so that I'll provide a feedback from the council, uh, meeting and then LSAT packet or through staff updates.
I mean, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying about the urgency of it, right? Because it's sort of like, okay, so you can do a memo, goes Kayla, Kayla doesn't speak at every meeting, right? So at some point, she pops up on the advance agenda, everybody, all the other departments do too. And that's got to be frustrating. I would, you want, you know, you want somebody to see your stuff and be responding. Um, and I don't, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do that exactly.
I think if it's an item on a council agenda, and I'm there presenting, there's more of a feedback loop. I think this may be in reference to more memos where I'm just sending them on LSAT's behalf on a topic that's maybe not on the agenda. So if I don't hear feedback on that through the city manager's office, then the feedback loop is not closed.
You know, that's, that's one that we take, I, I, I don't want to put this off, but I want, how could we do a better job? Yeah.
So this is the, to LSAT, we, we heard this from OSAT as far as acquisitions goes and exactly. So this is a theme that we're thinking on, and I know that we're working to, that is a, not suicide, it's factoring answers to anything. Uh, but basically just, hey, like, you're not alone. We can give feedback and staff is working, helping us ensure that communications are better, uh, sooner. I don't know.
I think that's fair. No, I think, did folks agree with that? Thumbs up on that. But I don't expect you guys to give a thumbs up.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, we'll keep doing that.
I mean, it's sort of like, I had memos for valuable from, for, for most folks, so, yeah. Uh, we can keep rolling with that. If something, you know, you heard, you heard some of our feedback on that. So if you have a different approach, then we're all good.
And part of it too, I mean, we're just, we're blown away and so grateful that Kayla is amazing, that her job is amazing. And Hannah as well. And I think part of the thing is what Todd is talking about, about how fast we're doing this topic is, both nationally and regionally and countywide. And things are changing all the time, and we're paying attention to all of that, because we want you all to know what's changing quickly. And it's not always the next thing on the list of the month. Um, so, I mean, we're leaders and we're behind all at the same time as a city, right? And so it's kind of that, um, us wanting to like, hello.
Yeah, well, look, and I don't, again, I don't have an answer for that either. I think you can, you know, when I'm talking to the most staff, and I get, you know, email about, or whatever. And sometimes they're just informational, and sometimes they're time-sensitive. And I say, good time-sensitive in the subject one. And then some of them, it's like they're on fire, and you need to get to this today. And it's like, urgent, I'm like, well, if everything's urgent, which I think at some level, that's the message we've got, right? That's, and you know, um, you know, so maybe it's urgent or, or, I mean, something, but maybe if there's a way of saying, this needs to be acted upon immediately because.
It would be readying, yeah.
She can do that, but we can, we should get back to you with more information. We will, and so that's.
This conversation is good.
That's our, that's our home. Okay? That's what I said at the beginning about some of these topics, we're going to need further discussion. I don't know the leader in meeting, but you deserve better guidance than we're giving you tonight.
I, I mean, I would, you know, I would prefer face-to-face, right? And I'm, you know, we're front to front time, but, you know, I wouldn't be opposed with just for meeting once a quarter. And I think we can figure out the cadence, but this one's a real important one that I think deserves this face-to-face. You know, we're getting more done versus 25 memos in one, right? You know, maybe I'm exaggerating, but you know what I'm saying? So I'd be open to having more frequently, or whatever, I throw a quarterly. Yeah, so it's just.
I think that's something we need to think about. And the reason we need to think about it is equity between some of the committees, part of it is staff time. I guess that's like four additional meeting or three additional meeting. We just have, you know, but I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think there may be some good reason to actually do that. And maybe you guys can think about it, you can think about what you like. Maybe you have some suggestion, maybe it's not like, oh, we don't need to order.
Well, it's part of the two, like, these three questions are kind of aligned with the proportional representation of sustainability in the city's work plan, right? So back to Tim's point, it's kind of like proportional to everything that's on the work plan, and there's a lot going on in sustainability.
Yeah, there is. And, and the one thing that you can, you should really. And, and the one thing that you can, you should really, I think you should take great pride in and take part in, is that we have as a community and we as a city, we're not perfect by anything, but we have instituted in a way with this, in a way that, um, I, I feel like it's pretty, maybe from older county, it's not, you know, there's other communities that maybe do more. But I think we've done, I, I think we've done good work, partly at the cost of the suggestions we've gotten over the years from Elsa. So, um, I mean, I'm trying to kind of give you that juice of like, we really do appreciate it because, you know, for what you volunteer, make sure everyone thinks you're doing. Seriously. So the next one, um, unless somebody gets something more on that. Okay, about, Elsa has committed to supporting the implementation of their internal decarbonization plan. What expectation does the council have for Elsa's engagement throughout this process?
It's a con- context here is, this is a really important plan, right? You guys, you guys, I think we're something that we are so, we're like, wow, this is amazing. Staff's gonna do a lot of work on this, consultants, other folks. Do, you know, we clearly have a strong opinion that it needs to be done really well and like to the point of the plan and such. What is your expectation for that? Should we, are we like leaning over and like, are we on top of it, watching the plan? Or are we, should we remove ourselves?
Um, just something. In, internally.
You know, I think we're working as a staff to kind of finalize the implementation scope and timeline and, you know, how that's going to be implemented through public works. And so I think from the board, there's varying opinions or feelings about just the frequency of updates and the frequency of feedback, um, through the memos to council. So it is something where Elsa should be providing memos to council bi-monthly, in which case it would need to be almost a standing item on the agenda so that we have time to discuss. You know, create a memo outline and then appoint a member to write the memo so that it can be sent to council. So it's really just understanding how frequently council would like feedback from Elsa because that will greatly affect the time that we have. And I will say that from a staff, um, perspective, you know, we have a large project that we're trying to coordinate. It's also mul- uh, mul- multiple different departments that are working on this, millions of dollars. So it is, I think the timeline on it is a little bit slower than some members of Elsa would like to see. So it's just kind of a matter of, would you like Elsa to feedback on that? On the timing piece and on the implementation piece? Or is it something more so where when I have updates for them, bring it to them and then potentially there's a feedback process there?
I wonder if that's kind of another tick on the list of things that we should be thinking about. I mean, I don't know, that is just like the one we just talked about. We need to figure out how to get that and we, we can decide that tonight. I'm not sure we can decide that tonight. We should get a good response about, I, I think the frequency of how we raise these things in meetings is, you know, we've got, I mean, this is the challenge. We have so many things, but you've read, you know, because you follow everything more closely than I do. But that advanced agenda that we are working with, trying to spot things in, it's hard. And the idea of having every meeting going until, you know, 11:15, 1:13 is not probably sustainable. So the more we add, we just have to figure out a balance and a way to do this in a way that solves or addresses the challenges without necessarily wreaking havoc in a way that you don't want, we don't want, the community doesn't want. I think we have more work to think about that. And you do, maybe if you have suggestions, right? I think we're, you know, you're telling us, Kayla, a little bit about.
That we've been talking about is staff is more memos from staff. So to cover topics that might not be, need to be a council agenda item, where I come up and do a big show and present information to all, but us presenting it to you through a staff memo, that might be an opportunity, we can align the staff memo with an Elsa meeting for Elsa to also have a memo after that. So like, here's staff's update on this project and then here's Elsa's feedback on staff's update. So that we're continuing that feedback loop because it is a high priority council work and item for the implementation of the plan. And I think similar to some of the other questions, it's like, when it's going to council in the planning phase, there are clear opportunities for Elsa feedback, but then now it's like, we're implementing it. And then they're like, but when and how and how quickly and what are the details and how can we provide feedback?
I, I think that we're actually relying on you and your staff to tell us too, what is that time? Like, when are things happening? We made the decision, we gave the direction, we want this, the community wants this. So if there's something that you guys feel is missing from this implementation component, my recommendation would be let Kayla know. Because that's the person who we are, at least I know I am, relying on to get done what we said everybody in the committee wants. Oh, that was sorry, because that's just a heavy weight on your shoulders.
Well, part of this too is proportional to, um, the sustainability division capacity, right? So wonderful extension of adding Hannah's role and then thinking about, again, the proportional weight of internal decarbonization. Community decarbonization, we don't want to, we don't want to lose Kayla to burnout, right? So I'm thinking down the road, is this about memos? But is this also about having staff capacity to match what's, what's in our work plan, right? And board grant writing to create another position in sustainability, right? The, the overseeing of the internal decarbonization plan is a full-time job in and of itself. And now we're adding community decarbonization. So a, a lot of it too is our kind of, back to Todd's point of having context, thinking about staff capacity and planning out going forward about are we going to be able to just do this with the two persons in the department?
And I, I think that's, uh, that's going to be an ongoing discussion, I think, because budget is, uh, has been a real issue on this, um, and some of the grants have not been what we wanted, right? So in particular, and it's one of those things that some of the speed will fit in the land. Um, but I, I have great confidence that that's going to happen. But we'll get into that.
You need a meeting, I thought it was great to sit back in your writing table and everything. But then as the meeting has gone on, it's so hard to get anybody's attention back there. So I can't disrupt the meeting or anything with that. But I do, you know, um, yes, I've been storming a little bit at times during this meeting. A lot of, a lot of money being talked about, capital projects, we've got a lot of, uh, Brad earlier, there's well over a hundred million dollars in capital projects that you're going to be saving your budget for next year. That's a lot. Uh, and in terms of the staff capacity, you know, I want to make it clear that the internal decar plan is not entirely actual. We have a whole team of engineers and project managers that do this kind of work all the time. They're working on that, Kayla's a part of that team. So I agree, I don't see Kayla burnout because she brings so much to the organization and this community. Uh, we want her to use her better, break out with all of the great. So, um, it's, it's, as far as like the updates and moving things along, there's been a lot of themes that are coming up tonight, but we're starting to see with other board divisions. And, and also with like community stuff in general where there's kind of this, it almost seems like an assumption sometimes that we're not doing, people's not caring about it. There's a lot of wheels moving in the background or different apartments and different buildings. They're moving fast and they're moving hard. And we're telling our story very well and talking about all the customers' story. Uh, it's something that we recognize we need to do better, uh, so we'll share those stories and people know how these things are moving along. I recognize frustration, I'm sure you're frustrated. And, and I can share that too. Oh, we're doing all the standings and needs of hopes. Uh, it is a big question. And how do we, how do we do all those things in a efficient way without taking away other factors? So just wanted to make a couple of points on that. Uh, and then I also, um, I don't know, I guess when you're talking about these things, um, I, I think somebody made a point about, um, the gas-powered, lots of landscape equipment maybe isn't as important to this, to the internal decar plan in terms of impact. But I also heard a lot of customers saying, let's do something about the gas-powered plant maybe equipment. So, um, we're already on a lot of new agendas, I'm just kind of, yeah, kind of squirting back here sometimes, like, oh my gosh, how are we going to do all this? So I love the passion, your staff has that same kind of passion, will want to do more, will want to do more. But finding that balance is something that I'm really frankly struggling with. You know, all these conversations I'm having, that's just. So I hope I didn't like, I squirming into your seats, but.
She doesn't want us to hear every Tuesday, like, and not to the end of the year.
I was thinking about this, like, you haven't even met with all the board of officials yet, already talking about meeting with Elsa. I agree with that, but there's, there's just all those other dynamics. Why not go like, oh, yeah, so.
My friend, you get so.
But the key is getting things done, right? I mean, in the end, that's the measure of some of this. It's not the meetings necessarily, it's not the memo links. The memos are, they're, they're designed to move us forward into action. And I think that's, um, I think you make a good point that we don't, you know, big Santa stories. And maybe it's just because I do litigation and trials. It's, it's got to tell your story, but we have to tell our story to you, right? So you know what we're doing, so you're not like, I just sent this off, I have no idea what's happening, I don't see anything happening. Well, we can do a better job. We just have a, we've got a new, um, um, communications manager. And I'm thrilled about that because I think that's been something that will help all the way around to tell our story, yours to the community. That's a really, really important thing for all the reasons. You know, community is going to have some feedback on some of the ways you can raise it too, right? And that's going to affect us and people, you know, so.
So just to close out on that one, I think if, if we think that the process has been going well, like, we think it's going too slow, we don't want to happy with the reasons why, then you'll probably get enough of us. I mean, we'll talk to Kayla personally.
Yeah, no, 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 you can do both, you can.
Josh says no.
But I, you know, I think that's really, it's really important, probably that. All right, um, it's nine o'clock.
But I want to prioritize the last four, we can do that.
I think it's, uh. Yeah, we prioritize.
Can we get, um, uh, energy code and then, um, maybe, uh, increased funding for sustainability, especially to.
Yeah, let's see, okay, the two, those are the first two, yeah, on the last page. All right.
What do you mean by the first one?
Here, I can read it.
And I would, would. Oh, yeah, we just, you know, it's been a lot of, um, uh, a little bit, you know, I think we've thrashed over, over the years on the energy code and, um, we're just wondering where this council's, since, when I say thrashing, like, you know, we passed one and certainly we had an unexpected event that required us to maybe roll it back. Yes, commercial energy code happening, uh, maybe we're, I don't know, spoken on that, but, um, I guess we're, you know, we spend a lot of time thinking about energy code, building a lot of energy. Uh, but just sort of wondering, are you guys burnt out on the energy code topic? Are you sort of feeling like you're like now finally informed and you're ready to lean in more? Like, where, where are you, where are your heads out?
Um, I can, I think Jeff.
Um, Chris, this is for, for sure he's on Tuesday.
Oh, we're going to get the.
Yeah, criminal energy code amendments are coming.
April 17. April 17.
And then you all are going to see it in a week, aren't you?
So that's, there's going to be events to that, but Rob and Natalie with the, a whole bunch of people. Yeah, so that's the answer back.
I can add, yeah, so, um, a few, few council meetings, right? Members of the public call, reference some of the costs of the 23rd versus 28th. In that same meeting, developer showed up, immediately said, we're going to get away with it. It's too hard, it's too productive, it's too aggressive. And I think the danger in all that, and that's all the long term thoughts, right? And the danger in that is thinking that 2021 is like the top of the line with energy code building standard. And there's far better building standards. We need to be looking beyond 2025, um, like who already, and we need to be getting more of that. Especially probably like the grid load. And not kind of maxing out. Creating building standards. Really that, most of all. But so I guess that's kind of the, speaking of the pace is, are, are we feeling like we can entertain more aggressive building, more less impactful?
Or maybe to the. You're the advisors, do you, I mean, like, that would be something for you to give suggestions of. Rather than us sitting here and saying, you know, oh, first of all, this is how we would, like, this is how we would say. I think it's a, what we look to you for is to give us that advice, to bring up the ideas, to, to say, these are other higher energy standards that are, we think can be implemented, whether that's for new construction or if you're recommending that it not be new, that it's retroactive, whatever those suggestions may be when we talk about that, that would be the kind of information I think to bring to us, instead of us telling you to do it. Does that make sense?
Or, or parts of the code that are attainable, right? Because you say it's not feasible, like these numbers, but there's a reason why council rolled it back for fire regulations, right? There's a, there is a cost associated with building to that code. And 2021 seems to be very, I'm, I'm not saying there's not more, but, you know, from what that developer said, like, we're the only municipality in the state of Colorado that's adopted that code. That could be a fall, I don't know, you know, fact checking on that one, but I've spoken to people that had to build that code and it's more than thousands of dollars, right? So that comment seems unlikely. So again, there was a lot of blowback with fire victims that said this is not, and we've got two that are, you know, I don't know if you're building to the 2021 debt or not, but I, I know firsthand examples that it added significant cost with it. So, and I'm all for, you know, I mean, what's attainable, right? Like, what is, what's real feasible? So if there's parts of the code that's like, we should be implementing these things, let us know, give us your advice on that.
Are you talking about, we're sure you're talking about the residential code for both.
So next week we'll be talking about all the amendments to the codes. And so maybe this is an opportunity to kind of tie in recommendation on that. So there's mostly commercial code amendments, but there's a few on the residential. So it might just be an opportunity to bring, you know, feedback and ideas to that meeting because we will be talking about both.
Yeah, I, I think predicting it, there's going to be widening discussion. I mean, just based on what we've heard, um, based on the way that it's passed, based on, the, um, costs of some limited ability to some standards. Um, I think it's useful, but I didn't know that there were other, you know, there, there are other standards, that's, you know, that may be worth, uh, some, uh, discussion too. But I know that that's where, I would say that's, you know, that's something that we need to hear from the whole community. Um, and regarding the whole community. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what we're going to see.
This is also a great initiation.
Yeah, but.
Because informing the residents before they engage with us, you know, getting them a lot of good information on where you, why you think these things, right? Like, why, why you recommend they do and they look, I would say that is the best way to get by.
Sure. Does that help?
And to, that in addition to telling them what they can do and how they can do it, get the accurate numbers for what the cost difference is. Because I know that during the fires, there were a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation about how much it would cost to put in a heat pump or to go all electric. or to go all electric or whatever it was. And when we actually went through the process and went all electric, we found out, no, it's not much more. And the long-term savings is, you know, 10 years, it's all going to be paid off and there's going to be saving. So bring all of that kind of information, not just what the regulations are, but how they can do it in cost-effective way.
I, I think the only thing I'd say is be careful on document costs. I think it's just that that was. I mean, if you have some good information, great. I, I would wholeheartedly disagree, so, now. Only because I've seen the estimates for a whole bunch of them. But different people did different things and different people had different levels. Some people had a whole bunch of help on certain parts there. A lot of subsidies from folks that they were working with. I mean, so it's, you know, it's just going to be, that's going to be a challenging number session, it's no question. But I didn't, you know, I don't know that we need to, I, I don't know if there's any more feedback we can provide if you want, do I want to be that? Yeah. Fair for Tom.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, one of the problems with pace has been not, not the pace in and of itself, but like what we found with the fire was sort of a lack of, like, when people had, had a question. Where do we get, because we are out in front and we are a small municipality and we didn't have great answers on day one when people had questions. Well, I was like, well, people haven't been building to 2021 code yet, so we don't, we don't really, we don't think it's going to be 30% more. We think it's going to be a lot less, we're getting some time to get that information out to our residents in a really factual way. When I was at the building expo at Cent Church, and a lot of the people like, we've never built to this code, we don't really know. Listening to builders go, we think it's going to be about 20% more. And that there's, the fact that it's a round number means they're lying, right? They don't actually know, they're guessing, right? And so, but the problem was, we're so far, we're out in front of the pace of, of some of our neighbors and other things, that it created other kinds of problems. It also created the problem of having a lot of people build back to the 2021 code, right? Like, that's, like, you know, a, a elevator. It was a good thing that they kind of felt forced into doing something out of their comfort zone. And we got a lot more houses built to 2021 code than if we were still sitting on a 2018 code, right? So there was a benefit in being so quick. But again, I worry about doing, repeating that beat again, and being like, okay, no one's adopted the 2024 code, well, let's go, right? Like, oh, again, like, do we understand that 2024 code, that's been the new ICC, it's come about in three years, right? So we're going to get hundreds out, or anyways, you don't typically adopt it the year it gets posted, right? There's a little bit of a process of it and an understanding of it. So I would be concerned personally, if in the year 2024, we were adopting the 2024 ICC. That would, that would be concerning for me as far as repeating the, the pace we had last time. But I don't want to, I certainly don't want to be falling behind, I'd be sort of prepared for it. If Lockheed, Superior, Erie and Boulder are all under 2024, and here we are just kind of like hanging out, like, why aren't we moving at the same pace as everyone else? But because of our size and because of the complexity, I'm not super excited to be in front of our neighboring communities on, on these. I'd rather than collaborating, working together and, and, you know, again, having some of the things that people talk about, like, well, gosh, if Lewis and I are going to do this again, or if we can carbon copy Boulder's new 2024 code and then make some adjustments to it, and they understand it, and they've been through it, and they know some costs. So I know I'm talking to LSET, but I think I would like our pace to be a tiny bit more pulled back to like, in the first 10%, but not the first 1%. Um, so that's my thoughts on our, on our current pace. And, and again, we're coming back to amendments, which is, so we passed a really aggressive commercial code, and we're coming back to some amendments that my understanding is the same, or just, you know, some like, this part of it has been difficult, this piece is hard to find, or this delay, like, what can we do if we can't get, what, you know, what are some other things? Now that we're trying to put it in practice, if people are actually building to this code, what are some things that we're running into? And I think that's great, like, that's the conversation we're having. And I hope it's not seen as a rollback, it's more about fine-tuning what's most possible right now. And not be like, yeah, those are all bad choices, let's just roll it all back. It's more like, okay, we jumped out real fast and now let's fix it and make it right. And then how do we do that a little bit, you know, wisely in the years to come, so that was not, that's fair.
And I think those, those growing pains of policy driving behavior are inevitable, right? For sure. And I think, um, Marshall Fire was horrific. And these silver bindings that we're seeing around regional cooperation around codes, around HVAC companies, um, getting more and more people trained about how to install heat pumps. I mean, there's been astounding amount of shift because of our leadership in policy that affected behaviors, that's affecting the industry, right? And those are the kinds of driving things that move people forward in giving those, those rebates and understandings about. So I think, uh, yeah, the growing pains are inevitable and good things come out of it when we move towards, um, educating our people.
Why don't we move on to the last question, which is, what thoughts, unless there's other council or commentary? What thoughts does council have in regards to increased funding in the 2025, 26 budget to support additional rebates in staffing for sustainability or that's a good question.
Putting the softballs in the bag.
Yeah, and you just don't, that's right.
Budget, we're going to be thinking about this here in the next month or two, so just trying to get a feel for it. You guys talked a lot about liking carrots before you like sticks, carrots cost money, you've got to put carrots in the budget.
Yeah, you know, the, here's the way, I'll, I'll start off on this because I've seen this kind of, before, one of my former council members used to say, if you put something in the city, um, survey that says, do you want increased funding in the 2025, 26 budget to support additional rebates in staffing for sustainability? In all likelihood, the answer is going to be like 75 or 80%. I go, maybe that's, maybe 50, 60% perhaps, maybe that's more realistic. Yes, the question is, compared to what? You have to, I mean, and that's, the better questions are, well, with these priorities, would you be, you know, I mean, would you rather do this or this or this? Or, uh, you know, some other permutation, we'd do less of each, but all of it, all of them or only two of them, or whatever. And that's, it's hard question to answer in the absence of at least a draft of the budget. I think that is something I'm really looking forward to your interview about. Because I don't know whether the answer from your perspective to that is yes, but I bet it might be even if you're sitting here now. Uh, because you talked about civil beats, right? More staffing and more, uh, program and stuff, so, um, but, uh, you know, I don't, trying to blow smoke. It's, it's hard to know what yet we're going to want to do. And a rebate is a very specific kind of thing. And staffing may or may not be the way to achieve, especially sustainability staffing, it may be staffing somewhere else to achieve what it is that you want. So that's where my hesitation is, other thoughts?
I, I'd actually love to see your recommendations for what you've been in position for. That helps us make decisions on how much to allocate, rather than being like, here's not much you have to spend, go figure out how. Tell us what you want, what you'd love to see, we can figure out the person who can get in line.
Coming soon to announce that meeting near here.
Can we just twist on the question, is, would you expect that the sustainability budget is significantly more, uh, based on the work plan? And based on sort of, you know, things have changed in the last two years? We have an internal decar plan, we have a community decar plan, we, you know, like, I, I'm just trying to gauge, like, are you going to be shocked if we put a number that matches with the things that we're trying to get done?
Or are you going to? Not anymore. Definitely. I mean, I think like, sustainability for housing, two of my biggest priorities, you know, I mean that over or less than anyone else, but it's like, yeah, and this is, when they're your highest priority, you gotta, assuming you put money towards it. And so there's a lot of money going towards it currently, and it'll be very interesting to see what those, you know, um, what the battles are. And, you know, what, what gets less funding if this gets more funding? Like, we have to have a balanced budget, right? And so when revenue goes up, we have a lot more fun playing, where should we put that revenue? Um, and when it doesn't, that's a problem, right? And so this, I'll say that this is a clear priority for council and budgets are supposed to match our priorities and our work plan. But again, that's a huge caveat, there's almost so much money. But yes, I, 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 from my perspective, this is a priority.
I would just add, you know, I think one of the real challenges we have is doing the, the sort of balancing in the way that the opportunity costs, and if you do this, you can't do that. And to that end, it's, minimize anything that anyone has done, and I think this is true, the, the last, um, presentation as well. It, it's relatively easy to come up with a long list of things that would be great to spend money on. And the really hard part is like, looking at that and making the hard choices of what do you cut, what do you not do? And I think that's one area where I have to report, it's less fun than like, working on new projects and like, coming up with an exciting list. But like, where, like, where, if there was only X dollars available to fund these programs, what are the three most important ones? What are the five, you know, what's the sort of rank order, where are the priorities? Where is the low hanging fruit, where do we get the most return on our dollar? So on and so forth, and feedback in that category in particular, um, I know would be useful to this group and to finance committee as we sort of work on the two-year budget and, and think about how do you, you know, balance road paving with sustainability programs? Like, that's not an, an obvious sort of exercise or how, you know, there's so many things that, um, that are worthwhile and worth doing and such a limited ability to do all of them. Other thoughts?
All right. Any other comments? You squirm him?
I think your answers on the budget question were great. I said, dude, we could have, uh, staffing requests from probably all of the departments, that's what he wants. And truly, as a good justification for deep, more staff and support. And, um, I would just note as far as sustainability, uh, resource allocation, uh, I would, I would posit that it's a lot higher resource allocation today than it was been here almost two years, two years ago, staffing, the project management team, engineering and so forth, programs. So we're on the right track, I think, as far as, how far can we go? That's going to be, you guys are going to have some balancing of priorities to, to look at, double processes. Yeah, go ahead. And please submit those proposals to Kayla, March 29th, for any kind of capital projects, um, program stuff, maybe in April.
Did you have something?
Yeah, when it comes to the, but, and not necessarily just the ICC, but like, all like the code changes to the carfalls, the residential. Have we already taken this through the Board of Appeals and are we hearing from them in quote unquote, first reading? Are the rest of you who's interested in, I was getting their fights on those, or?
We took it through the Board of Appeals when we passed. So I wasn't here for the residential, but ICC 2001, when the RCF index went through, but we took it through Board of Appeals for the commercial code changes. And then the Board of Appeals engaged at the business feedback meetings this summer. I don't know that it's going, that the amendments are going to the Board of Appeals.
I don't know, I don't think so.
They're not going to be back.
They've not met this year.
And this is coming online.
First reading.
And hopefully.
It was.
They're making that, but it's going to actually be.
They're starting early process.
Yeah, it won't be by the first reading.
They're not meeting again until after September.
So just.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
I'd like to have, as council, I'd like to have their advice on.
Yeah, one of the, one of the amendments, I think, is to change, if I'm remembering correctly. Jeff, check me on this, one of the changes is to add back to their, to the ordinance, that that's one of their duties or.
That's one of the highlights that we thought, I guess.
Good. Yeah, well, um, this is a study question, right? And this is, no, I'm, I'm just thinking it's, you know, or beyond, maybe beyond the scope of the agenda, so, let's.
I was just concerned giving it.
I, I think your reason is very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks for providing the help.
Yeah, this was, it's really helpful. All of it, your questions? Thank you, maybe we need to, should we like write our, write our answers to the other two that we didn't get?
It's okay.
I appreciate writing you a memo, I designate you.
Thank you.
I designate you to write a memo.
Yeah, get it right up, yeah.